Okay, we will call this meeting to order at 5:34 PM. Thank you to everyone for being here. Council, thank you for being here. Staff, thank you. Citizens, thank you for being present. We would do the roll call, please.
Mayor Rodham.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Caffey.
Here.
Councilmember Willie.
Here.
Councilmember Oliveris.
Here.
Councilmember Starnes.
Here.
Councilmember Milton.
Here.
Would stand and please join me for the pledge. Remain standing for the invitation to follow. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Councilmember Willie?
Please bow your heads. Keep us oh God from pettiness. Let us be large in thought, in word, in deed. Let us be done with fault finding and leave us off self-seeking. May we put away all pretense and meet each other face to face without self-pity and without prejudice. May we never be hasty in judgment and always be generous. Let us take time for all things. Teach us to put into action our better prince impulses. Straightforward and unafraid. Grant that may we, that we may realize it is the little things that create differences, that in the big things of life, we are as one. And may we strive to touch and to know the great common human heart of us all. And oh Lord, let us not forget to be kind. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Citizens Communications? Thank you. Neil Webstein, you have three topics, right Neil?
Actually, two of them are just my personal opinion to all of you here.
Okay, so I'll remind you that since you have two topics that are the same and one that's separate, you will have a total of six minutes. Is that fair enough?
That's fair enough.
Thank you, sir.
First one is I double O F. At Dutch and Betty Backhouse's grave, the biggest, best pine tree out there still has four suicide limbs hanging like this. Sure be nice if we could get that taken care of. As far as PFAs go, and I'm not addressing this to the Public Works Director or anyone else here, but I believe all of you remember the Dow Chemical PFA spill in Virginia that killed cattle and people? Well, those PFAs not only polluted, and PFAs are what forever chemicals? They never go away like nuclear radiation. It not only polluted the surface water and it polluted the groundwater. I wear this shirt because I love this place we're on. Without water, none of us or this planet would ever be here. Water is the number one resource on this planet. Without it, nothing exists, usable water. And the other thing, on Oakley, west of Brazos, the newly paved Oakley, there is a problem with a grandfather who lives on the top of the hill, who took down his children at play signs because it did no good. He has grandchildren and neighbors have grandchildren. And he has requested me to suggest to see if we couldn't get something maybe like one or two 25 MP8 signs installed. I don't know, but not a speed bump. So if it's his concern and he lives on top of that hill with that new pavement, I think that's an issue that we all ought to address. And for those of you who don't know me, my name is Neil Webstein and I live at 2418 Post Oak. And so with that, I am a El Camino Real Master Naturalist in Mylum County. And we're going to have some very interesting things going on in June next to the Brazos River. The word will get out when the guests and the people come to town. And it'll be really exciting because we're going to have people coming in here, not from just the state, but all over the nation and possibly from overseas. Enjoy it. Thank you all. I'm glad you had a chance to hear me.
Thank you Neil.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you coming to speak.
You bet.
I think I saw City Manager Kelty making note of your concerns, sir.
Ah, you bet.
Mayor Pro Tim Perry, I think you get to swear me in. Ah. Actually Shannon does it, doesn't she? Shannon?
I can't, you can't.
Shannon does it. I'll just screw it up.
All right, you'll raise your right hand, repeat after me. I Ward Rodham.
I Ward Rodham.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute?
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of my mayoral office?
The duties of my mayoral office.
Of the state of Texas?
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
And of the city of Rockdale.
And of the city of Rockdale.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, citizens. I spoke briefly yesterday at the Rockdale Homecoming and I said a couple of things before reading the proclamation. I said, "It's an honor to be mayor for the city of Rockdale," and it truly is. And I said, "People ask me typically two questions when they talk about being mayor." One, what's it like being mayor for the city of Rockdale? My answer is two answers. Number one is challenging, number two is rewarding. And then the last, the next question they always ask me is, "What's it like being a politician?" I'm not a politician, I just love this town. And that's why I've run for the position of mayor. And I hope I can, I hope I have been and I hope I continue to meet council's expectations and to meet our citizens' expectations. So thank you.
How come they ask me how much I get paid?
I get that too.
Pretty good. That's pretty good. All right, moving on. I am going to read the proclamation for National Safe Boating Week. Whereas many residents engage in boating, fishing, and other recreational activities on the navigable waters around Texas Mylum County, and whereas about 12% of US homeowners own or co-own recreation, a recreational vessel of some type, including open powerboats, cabin powerboats, personal watercraft, and paddlecraft such as kayaks and canoes. Whereas on average, more than 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States and more than 2,000 are injured on average. Whereas alcohol use remains the leading contributing factor in fatal boating accidents. And whereas the United States Coast Guard considers operation of an engine cutoff switches to be important because when operators and powerboats are ejected or fall overboard, the boat will typically continue to operate. Whereas boating safety concerns and boating safety campaigns can teach people how to adhere to better boating practices and help them boat more safely. And now therefore, be it proclaimed that I Ward Rodham, mayor of the city of Rockdale, Texas, do hereby declare the week of May 17th through the 23rd, 2025, as Safe Boating Week and the start of a year-round effort to promote safe boating. When this proclamation came about, Tim asked me, he goes, he said, "Well, we don't have any lakes in Rockdale real close." I said, "Well, we have a lot of citizens, we really do have a lot of citizens who partake in boating and camping and things like that." So I think it, and he wasn't questioning the importance of the proclamation by all means. But we do have a lot of citizens who enjoy boating and that's a wonderful recreation pastime. So it's very serious. I speak with our game warden fairly often. And he talks about working some of the bigger lakes in Austin and some of the things that they encounter as game wardens working the lake. And most all of the accidents and all the incidents are related to alcohol and unsafe boating. So this is very important. Okay, Mr. Lachlan. Hot funds for the Sunkissed Music Festival. Now I have you on the agenda right here, sir.
Yes, sir. Is that the one I was supposed to fill out?
Sir?
Was that the one I was supposed to fill out?
You're good.
Okay.
Go ahead. Step up close to the mic, please.
I don't want to bow. All right, my name is Simon Lachlan. For most of y'all that don't know, just a little family history about myself. I am the grandson of Billy Ray Lachlan and son of Kerry Lachlan, older brother of Tori Lachlan, if that helps out. But overall, the event was pretty well. The production of the show was amazing. I would highly recommend the crew from San Antonio to come out and help out with any events that people have for the future. It was two days. And I want to say there was 24 rooms all in all over that whole weekend, but unfortunately only like 17 was documented because three out of the six hotels were non-compliant with filling out the paperwork or didn't know about the new rules or terms and conditions that you guys had changed at the beginning of this year. Other than that, anything else that I need to talk about? I believe I emailed all the receipts over to you shortly after the festival. I think it was like nine, nine thousand something.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Simon, what do you think your overall, daily overall attendance was?
Reestimate. Just overall?
Daily attendance, I'll say.
Honestly, I'd have to ask my ticket person, but I think it was like 40 on average?
Forty?
Any other questions?
Are the hotels that I see one, two, three?
It was Regency, Days Inn.
Quality in?
No, Quality's got something here.
Oh, you're saying the ones at Sky Inn?
Sky Inn, there we go.
Okay, I got you. I thought you asked if you was.
I see, I see information from three.
And the other three were non-compliant and failing out that piece of paper.
Didn't understand it or refused to do it?
What was it? Days Inn, didn't do it. And I know I went and passed it out twice. One at the beginning of April and then roughly a week before the event. And the three did not fill it out. When I went to go pick it up and asked them if they could, and one, Regency Inn didn't want to do it, for whatever reason. But I know for a fact, a couple of my brother's buddies from Kansas came down and stayed at, what's that new one? The Sky Inn. And then there was a few at Regency Inn as well. As far as Days Inn, I don't believe anybody showed up. And as you guys can see on the paperwork, I have no problem turning in paper that says zero on it with the, with the Quality Inn that says zero.
Correct.
But other than that, it was 24 because it was like four at Sky Inn and then three at Regency Inn that weren't added to that total.
And did we put the burden on, did the city reach out to these hotels as well?
I need the responsibility of the applicant, the moment to receive.
I thought, I thought that we had decided it was, in this case, it would be Simon's obligation to follow through with it, but we were going to reach out to them as well in the beginning and let them know that this was a requirement and why they were getting this. Reason I'm asking this, so when, if they're not going to be, help us out with this information, when they come knocking on the door for something later, I need to remember that. So did we reach out to them? Does he may know if we reached out to them all at one time? Okay. Any other questions for Simon, council? Any other questions for?
I will add that Saturday night was a fireman's giveaway too, so.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I was just asking, what's your feeling on it? I mean, you do this, you know. You know, did you get the help you needed? Was it successful in your mind?
It was. It was successful because I actually have a event coming up in College Station for a different business. And then a venue in San Marcos reached out for me to lead the production of it. So people look at the superficial things of how many people showed up, but if you did go and talk to everyone that did show up, including all the vendors, which was like 30 plus of them, they all loved it. They all loved it. So unfortunately, people just listen to rumors or word of mouth, but it is what it is. I can't control the weather.
I will say this, I came by and went through and looked at some of your vendor. You had a lot of vendors. And that's impressive because on some of the other boards I'm on, to get people to come in and set up to do their wares or whatever, it's tough.
Yeah.
But, but I will say that you had a lot of vendors.
Thank you.
Well, I wasn't able to do this year, but we could go last year. Is this something that you're going to plan on doing next year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I know I've saw you on social media and through town advertising a lot, so I know you put your heart and soul into it. I don't recall exactly what the reimbursement was for it.
You guys?
Is that something we're deciding tonight or that's something we had already decided?
No, the reimbursement was after the fact based on the number of rooms that he occupied.
Yeah.
I do believe that you did your due diligence, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Lachlan?
I had people from LA come out and stay in some hotels.
Thank you, Tommy. You did good work.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate you being here.
Mayor Rodham?
Yes?
I just, I feel like I'd be remiss. First of all, I appreciate the fact that you attempt this. And I know you put a lot of energy and a lot of passion into it. At the same time, if I can be on the contrary, numbers do matter. And I felt like there was a lot that was promised that we were expecting that didn't show up.
I held up everything that I could do in my power as far as what was said about me, which were a lot of ugly things, not blaming anybody, but some things that from this community shouldn't be putting down other community members. And other people did join with that. So I can't control that. Nor am I going to really care about what people say because it's sticks and stones. But as far as you to say that, come on, like I have no control over who can come in.
Right. I'm just saying, if we're planning something for the future, we have, we have two different concerts in two different years to go by. If I'm being unfair, any of my fellow council members, please speak up. I'm not, I congratulate you, I thank you. You know, I wasn't, you know, as a 64-year-old, I wasn't in your target audience, you know? So it wasn't something that I would be at, but I wish you success. And trust me, I know all about people saying ugly things. And I'm sorry that that happens to you, I'm sorry that happens to anyone, because often it's done very disrespectfully and dishonestly. So thank you for what you did. I just, you know, if you go, if we try this again, I just feel like, you know, can't keep repeating the same thing, and hoping for different results. We've got to look for ways that this could be something that drew in four or 500 people a night.
I agree, but I also will say that it's first year, second year, third year, it's tough. And sticking it out and seeing what builds off of it is one thing. And I think as long as we're upfront and we're talking about reimbursements on the back end and not just giving out money for nothing, whether they produce or not produce, I don't know what more we could, we can ask for.
And they exceeded on the, in the one area that's, we've always seen is most important. If you had as much as 20, 26 hotel rooms, that was more than I think any of us would have guessed beforehand.
And so as long as we're working this process on the reimbursement basis, I think it's, all the things that both of y'all said I agree with, gain, keep going, get some more momentum, do it again next year. And then eventually, you do have to say, okay, this doesn't work or this is gaining traction or is not gaining traction. When we did the downtown festival, first year was really tough, second year we gained a little speed, and then everybody lost all the energy and it fell. So hopefully he's got enough energy to keep plugging away and see what happens.
Tim, that position we're getting, or is it the MDD that we're hiring somebody to do?
So they, they were starting later this month and?
Is that something they can help? They can help on that?
Yes.
In that same, you didn't do a lot, I'm saying, but if you had somebody else helping out, but you can use them.
Perfect.
Two directions.
And I wasn't, I wasn't here last year, council, but comparatively this year to last year.
I mean, it's two different ballparks because I came back from football and want to say two, two and a half months, just threw it together. And the city and community was more receptive to the last minute stuff. But I did have 10 months to plan this one. And I am a one-man army, so everything has to come through me, even though I want to fire I sometimes. But as far as just the overall attendance, then yeah, it went down. But as far as new ventures and expansion and other people wanting to be a part of this or have me be a part of orchestrating something, then it did open the door and was more successful than last time.
I will just say this, and I think we all know, we're going to see a shift in some of our demographic here over the next year, two years. We're already seeing it now at the fair, which is a huge event, but we're seeing more people from Austin. We're seeing people from Washington State, Seattle that are coming into place. So, so I think you hang in there, you keep at it. I think as that demographic changes somewhat, you're going to pick up a different crowd as well.
Counsel, can I add from the police department's perspective? I went out there, I believe it was Friday, it was Friday and Saturday when you had the event, right? I went out there on Friday, like you did, Councilman Willie, and drove around or walked around a little bit. The number of vendors that he had out there was pretty dang impressive, I'll tell you. For most of the public didn't show up, I thought they missed out. And from the police department's perspective, we had no issues with that, with that event either night that I remember being reported about.
No, it's family friendly.
Yeah. And so that was the impression that I got. I didn't go out there at night, we had no calls related to that event with any problems. Where anytime we have an event out there with the fair, whatever, we always had complaints about parking at least. But we had no issues related to your event. But the amount of vendors and what was going on out there, I was personally impressed with. I think if the public didn't show up, they missed out on a, on a, on a good event.
Thank you. Very good. Council, any other comments or questions? Thank you, Simon. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent agenda. Council, is there anything you want to discuss further that is in the consent agenda? I would ask.
I have another presentation. A few audits?
Oh, sorry. Number five.
Judge Whitmire.
Don, Don is Almond, number three.
I'm number five.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. I am Don Almond, CPA, and I would like to thank the mayor and council members for choosing my firm to do the audit for the city of Rockdale. Great, appreciate the business and enjoy coming out to Rockdale. Also need to thank the staff here. Everyone's great to work with. Need to thank Shannon and Tiffany and Roxanne and City Manager Tim Kelty. And need to give extra special thanks to Roxanne proudly because we do bother her by far the most. Roxanne is responsible for giving us pretty much all the accounting information for the audit. So again, big thanks to Roxanne for helping us get this done. And I'm sure to everyone's relief, I will not go over all 85 pages tonight of the single audit. If all goes well, we will just do three. Hopefully those three will be enough to get the financial information to you. If you do have your reports there with you, let's go to page eight. Uh, if you do have your reports there with you, let's go to page eight. See, up at the top, you'll see, uh, financial highlights, and that first bullet point, uh, reads, net position of the city of Rockdale increased three million eight hundred fifty-seven thousand seventy-nine dollars in the nine thirty twenty-four fiscal year for government-wide financial statements. As part of this three million eight hundred fifty-seven thousand dollar increase, net position of general fund activities increased five hundred fifty-six thousand six hundred and eight dollars, and proprietary fund increased three million three hundred thousand four hundred seventy-one dollars before transfers. Now, what the heck does that mean in English? Net position increases net income. So, the net income for the city of Rockdale for both general fund and water sewer funds was three point eight billion dollars. You might be thinking, whoa, wait a minute, wow, that's a whole lot of money. Three point five million of that came from grants. So, you know, and with grants, you get the grant income, then the grant expenses are capitalized. So, you know, it's not a, a direct correlation. So it's like, you know, don't, don't run out thinking, oh, my gosh, city of Rockdale has three point eight million dollars to spend. Oh, you know, a lot of that money came from grants, so just had to.
Twice to the speaker?
Like I said, just wanted to ha- hammer that home, you know, no, you don't, don't have three point eight million dollars to play with. But then the general fund had net income of five hundred fifty-six thousand. Water sewer, where most of that grant money came from, was that's the three point three million. Uh, your second bullet point there, city's total net position for governmental fund activities decreased six hundred seventy-eight thousand four hundred seven dollars for the twenty twenty-four fiscal year, resulting in ending net position of two million five hundred twenty-five thousand six thirteen. The decrease is due to capital asset expenditures. Now you might be thinking, what the heck's going on? You said we had three point eight million income. Now you're saying you had six hundred seventy-eight thousand loss. Government funds, all those capital assets from grants are expensed. So say with those, you know, it is a direct grant money in, grant money out. Those aren't depreciated, so that's the difference there. Like I say, from a three point eight million dollar income to a six hundred seventy-eight thousand decrease, just cuz all those grant, all those grant funds were expended. Uh, your third bullet point there, proprietary fund and general fund revenues did increase significantly in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, which does indicate economic growth for the city, which is of course good. Your general fund and proprietary, ah, proprietary fund expenses did increase, but at a lesser rate than revenue. So, yeah, that does indicate good, uh, fiscal management of your resources. And let's turn now to page ten. At the middle of the page, you'll see statement of net position, which is government audit for a balance sheet. So this is the balance sheet for city of Rockdale as of nine thirty twenty-four. Governmental activities is the general fund, business type activities, water sewer. Uh, we do have twenty-four and twenty-three side by side for comparison purposes. Current and other assets on the general fund, that's basically gonna be just any and all checking accounts, you know, all the bank accounts of the general fund, plus your, uh, property tax receivable, sales tax receivable. Uh, so your current assets there are three million two hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars, down a little bit from the three million seven fifteen. So we're down about four hundred and fifteen thousand on our current assets in the general fund. Capital assets net, that is netted depreciation, eleven million five hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred ninety dollars. That's up from the ten million nine ninety-one. So we got about a five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase. Actual assets were about nine fifty, depreciation in the general funds about four twenty-six. So, uh, total assets, fourteen million eight hundred sixteen thousand, up from the fourteen million seven oh six in the prior year, increased your assets about a hundred and ten thousand. Again, most of that coming from, from capital assets. Deferred outflows of resources is a TMRS pension number, doesn't really affect the city of Rockdale directly, nine hundred twenty-three thousand, up from eight thirty-four. Long-term liabilities, that is gonna be most of your bonds payable, then of course, any loans or leases payable with the city. Three million eight hundred seventy-two thousand five ninety-three, that's down from the four million six fifty-six. So you did pay your long-term debt down almost eight hundred thousand, which is of course good. Your other liabilities, that's gonna be your accounts payable, and then the current portion of any bonds, loans, and leases, nine hundred eight thousand, up from seven eighteen, so up about a hundred and ninety. Total liabilities, four million seven hundred eighty thousand, down from the five million three seventy-four. So we're down, now it's at about five hundred and, about five, six hundred thousand dollars down on your total liabilities, which is of course good. Deferred inflows of resource, again, another, uh, TMRS pension number, one million four twenty-three, up from the one million one eighty-seven. Uh, your net investment capital assets, that's kinda like the blue book value, you know, of your, that'd be like your buildings, vehicles, uh, basically any and all capital assets, general fund, minus depreciation, but then also minus any, any loans outstanding on those items. Seven million one hundred fifty thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars, up from the five million nine fifty-nine nine twenty. So we're up about uh, one million one hundred fifty thousand there. Restricted, that's just to make your, uh, bond and debt pay, and, you know, all, all the debt service payments for the next fiscal year, one million five hundred seventy thousand, up from one million five twenty-three. Unrestricted, free and clear, has no restrictions. Uh, eight hundred thirteen thousand down from the one million four ninety-five, so we're down about six hundred and eighty thousand. The decrease there is just from shifting money into capital assets. Like I say, as you, you know, you can see your net investment capital assets went up one point one million, so then the unrestricted went down that eight hundred thousand. But total net position overall is up nine million five hundred thirty-five thousand, up from the eight million nine seventy-eight. So you are up about five hundred fifty-six thousand on your total net position, which is really good, cuz like I say, most general funds, cities about your size, do good to break even. So, you know, to have a five hundred fifty thousand dollar net increase in the general fund is very good. Um, now let's move over to business type activities. That's your water sewer funds. Current assets there, same thing, all the checking accounts of the water sewer fund, plus your customer receivables, uh, in the water sewer fund. Twenty-four million hundred twenty-nine thousand thirty-seven, down from the twenty-seven million two oh five. So you are down about three million dollars on your current assets in water sewer. Capital assets, again, netted depreciation, lot of assets in water sewer. Twenty million eight hundred eleven thousand one sixty-six, up from fifteen million one oh five in the prior year. So you're up over five million dollars. Five point seven million was added in water sewer improvements. Again, with about three, you know, about three point five million of that coming from grant money last year. So you got total assets, almost forty-five million, forty-four million nine forty, up from the forty-two three. So you're up over, uh, about two point, two point six million on your total assets. Deferred outflows, again, pension number, doesn't really affect the city directly, two forty, two hundred forty-four thousand, down from three ten. Long-term liabilities, a lot more debt in water sewer fund too. That is mostly those big bond payables. Uh, with Texas Water Development Board there, twenty-eight million two twenty-three, but that's down right at a million dollars from the twenty-nine million three oh two six thirty-eight in the prior year. So you did decrease your long-term debt by over a million dollars. Other liabilities, again, that's current, uh, portion of your loans and bonds, and then also your accounts payable. One million nine hundred forty-nine thousand, up from the one million seven hundred, so we're up two forty-nine. Total liabilities, thirty million one seventy-two, down from the thirty-one million, again, right at a nine hundred thousand dollar decrease overall in your long-term debt, which is good. Deferred inflows, again, pension number, six hundred twenty-four thousand, up from five thirty-three. Your net position or net investment capital assets in the water sewer fund, big number here, eleven million three hundred thirty-one thousand, up from the eight point eight billion. Again, big reason for that increase was all that grant money put into water sewer improvements. Restricted funds to make, uh, bond, uh, debt service payments next year, one million three thirty-four, down from one million four forty-six. Unrestricted, free and clear, uh, big number here, one million seven hundred twenty, right at one million seven hundred twenty-one thousand, up from eight twenty-three. So you're up right at nine hundred thousand on your unrestricted money, free and clear money in water sewer, which is of course good. So you have your total net position, total net worth, kind of the, of the water sewer fund, fourteen million three hundred eighty-six thousand. Big increase from the eleven million eighty-six, so you're up that three point three million dollars in the water sewer fund. But remember, not all that's free cash to be spent, so be sure we got that, that, um, hammered down. Page eleven, statement of changes in the, uh, net position, which is government audit for profit and loss or income statement. So this is the income statement for the city of Rockdale. Again, um, governmental activities, general fund, business type activities, water sewer. Twenty twenty-four and twenty-three, side by side. We'll start over at the general fund, charge for services there. So that's gonna be licenses, permits, also like fines and fees. Six hundred fifty-nine thousand, right at six hundred sixty thousand, up from four ninety-three. So we're up a little, about a hundred and fifty, almost a hundred and sixty thousand in your, uh, service income, which is good. Property taxes, real good indicator of what's going on here. You're growing. Almost three million dollars, two million nine fifty-five, up from two million five twenty. So, you know, a big four hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase in property taxes. You know, that's over ten percent, about fifteen percent. That's pretty, and, you know, and that's not due to rate increase, that's due to, you know, property, property value and development increases. Sales taxes also up a little bit, one million one fifty-six, up from one million one hundred. It's fifty-six thousand dollar increase there. Franchise fees about the same, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, slight increase from two ninety. Hotel motel taxes were actually down just a little bit, turned seven thousand, down from two eighteen. Penalties and interest on your property taxes, about the same, a little, little decrease, twenty-eight thousand, down from thirty-one. Interest income, two hundred and thirteen thousand, up from two oh nine. Grant donations income was way down in the general fund, right at two hundred twenty thousand, down from eight twenty-one. So we're down about six hundred thousand in grant money for the general fund. Miscellaneous income, a hundred and sixty thousand, up from eight thousand. So total revenues were five million eight hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars, up from five million six ninety-one. So, you know, we're up, uh, right at two hundred thousand overall in your, uh, general fund, and that's with the six hundred thousand decrease in grant money. So you actually, your operating revenues actually would have been up, you know, about eight hundred thousand on the year. General government expenses, one million six forty-four, up from one million four eleven. Public safety, that's, uh, of your police, fire, and, uh, EMS services, two million one twenty-four, up from the two million thirteen. So we're up about a hundred and ten, a hundred and eleven thousand there. Highways and streets, about the same, seven hundred twenty-two thousand, slight increase from seven hundred nineteen. Community services, a hundred fifty-nine thousand, up from a hundred twenty-eight, slight increase, thirty-one thousand. Culture and recreation, parks and library, seven hundred seventy-seven thousand, down from eight twenty-seven, so down about fifty thousand there. Interest expense on the year, a hundred and eighteen thousand, down from one twenty-eight. So your increase or decrease, it is a positive, so that's net income. Three hundred fifty-two thousand, then transferred to a hundred four thousand over from, uh, water sewer. So you change in net position, five hundred fifty-six thousand. Six oh eight, as I mentioned, you know, very good, uh, result for a general fund to, to have almost six hundred thousand in net income. Now let's look over at the business type activities, uh, for water sewer. Charge for services there, so that's gonna be your water sewer and sanitation income. Uh, four million six hundred eighty-one thousand, up from four million two twenty-four. So again, night, it nice increase there too, up about four hundred and sixty thousand. Interest income, a hundred eighty-nine thousand, up from one seventy-two. Uh, that, uh, turn, I've hammered to death, grant income, three million five hundred thirty-eight thousand, way up from the four hundred seventy-nine. So you're up over three million dollars on your grant income. Miscellaneous income, about seven thousand, down from one eighty-nine. So total revenues, eight million four hundred sixteen thousand, up from the five million sixty-four. Remember, three million of that's grant money. So, uh, you know, can't really count those up, but then still, your operating, your service income was up four hundred sixty thousand for the year. So that's good. That, that is growth there. Uh, you know, the sixty-three thousand, that's your pension expenses in water sewer fund, down from eighty-three thousand the prior year. Interest expense, four forty-one, down from four fifty-two. Uh, your utility expenses, you know, that's all the expenses for the water and sewer fund, uh, four million four hundred seven thousand, that was up from the three million three seventy-six. So up about a million dollars in your water sewer expenses. A lot of that was due to increased repairs. Uh, there was a lot of increased repairs and maintenance in water sewer fund last year. Total expenses, four million nine eleven, up from three million nine eleven. So we're right at exactly a million dollar increase. Your increase, uh, in net position is positive, net income, three, three point five million dollars. Uh, transferred two point two out, so your change in net position was at three point three million. And that is way more than enough numbers for me tonight. Before I do finish though, wanna let y'all know, uh, one quick thing, I am wearing my Rockdale blue shirt tonight to thank the city of Rockdale for ten years of being your auditor. Thank y'all very much. I really appreciate that. I am retiring. I am selling my firm and going fishing, so.
Congratulations.
So, but anyway, thank, thank y'all for ten year. Thank y'all for ten years and good luck with your auditor next year.
Do you have a question, real quick?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead. On, on the eleven governmental activities, the, the, the drastic swing in, in, uh, grant and donation income from year to year and the miscellaneous, what, what, how does that compare?
Uh, I'd say the grants, uh, you know, cuz like I say, usually the grants run, you know, three, four, five years. And like I say, almost all of that's from the GLO MIT grant, where actually y'all, y'all just got a huge amount of money in, in the, the fiscal year of twenty twenty-four. Like I said, I think, you know, actually, if you wanna look, um, see if you really have trouble sleeping, read all eighty-five pages.
Is it common to have that big of a swing from year to year?
That's, I mean, that's bigger than normal. But like I say, again, you know, that's just kinda how the, the grant funds, you know, um, kinda worked out, fell out. Then just, just a whole bunch of the, of the GLO MIT grant money.
That grant was applied for in several years ago, and it took that long for the state of Texas, uh, to issue the grant funds. So that was all of our drainage projects.
Yeah. So like I say, it is pretty much done, I believe now, but I'm, see, I go, go to page seventy-seven.
So is it when you get, so is it when you get the grant or when the funds are appropriated?
Actually, the, the, the way audits work is, okay, your grant revenue is when you receive it, and then your grant expenditures are when you spend it. Or like I say, where I really get screamed at with some cities is in the case of, okay, like, you know, let's say if this year y'all hadn't actually spent most of that.
Right.
Cuz you actually, yeah, I was, I'll try not to bore y'all too much. The first year I did, y'all's rival, the city of Cameron, back in two thousand nine, they had got a bunch of grant money in one year, and then they spent it in the next year, and it was actually in service. So the first year I do their audit, they get like a nine hundred thousand dollar bump in depreciation, which made them lose money. So they're like, what do you mean we lost money? And it's like, you know, sorry, that's just the rules, you know, that's, that's the way. But, but like I said, seventy-seven, I think, does kinda illustrate kinda what y'all were talking about, how rare that, cuz you know, look at all your other grants y'all had. You know, the, the airport grant was a hundred thousand, winter storm marrow was two thirty-one. Uh, TDA was forty-seven. Then you see Texas General Land Office flood and drainage improvements, three million one hundred fifty thousand. So, yeah, that was just a big, huge, uh, amount in that one year. And then what, uh, what nice guys, the, so like I say, this will need to be filed online with the, with the state and federal government, and if this, uh, if these numbers don't match exactly, they kick it out and say, your numbers don't match, do it again. And they don't tell you why. So like I say, that's why I had to bother Roxanne to get all of y'all's grant stuff, cuz like I say, if your grant expenditures don't match to the dollar, they kick it back. And what, so, and actually, we do still need to do that part of it.
I was gonna say, have you done that part?
No. Yeah, you and Tim will get emails once they will probably work on that, uh, either tomorrow or later this week.
I've got one quick question.
Sure.
Uh, on page eleven, on the property taxes, that's just basically what we collected from property taxes, correct?
Yes, sir.
So then, with cornerstone coming on, besides the normal amount, I'm talking about so soon, twenty twenty-five, next year, besides the normal increase we always get, it should go up substantially, should it not?
Well, with the, with the cornerstone, remember that it is sixty percent in a turs.
So then that's pushed down for?
We only get forty percent of it.
Well, and, and actually, just, just to add a little bit to your question, that property tax number there, that is your levy? So, you know, that's the amount that was levied by the county. You probably collected a little less than that, cuz like I say, your property tax receivable, if you look on, like, page twenty-two, it's a hundred ninety-three thousand. So like I say, yeah, so you, what you actually collected would probably be that, you know, the two point nine million minus your increase in receivables for the year.
What do we get, about ninety-five percent collection?
We budget it ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven?
Yeah. So, yeah, actually, then, then if you see page twenty-three, that would be your actual property taxes collected for the year, two million nine oh eight. So, yeah, I mean, actually, yeah, you're probably more at ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent collected, so yeah. I'm sorry. Yes. Yeah, that, that is current and delinquent collections.
Well, thank you for everything.
Sure.
Good luck.
Thank y'all. Yeah.
Roxanne, do you have anything else?
Nope.
Counsel, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
Congratulations on your retirement.
Well, I will have to work with the acquiring firm for two years, which will make me sixty-two. When I first did this audit, I had black hair and I, I was gonna say I had abs, but not.
I had hair when you first did this audit.
Thank y'all.
Congratulations. Thank you, Roxanne.
Thank you, thank you. Judge Whitmire, give us a discussion and update on the status of the hop public transit. So, so thank you for being here, sir.
You bet. I got abs, but they're under this protective covering here. We're gonna make sure they last a while. Hey, um, so on the hop, so here's, here's where we are right now. Um, Commissioner Denman and I discussed it today. We actually discussed it last week. We discussed it again today after Commissioner's Court. We're a little tired of waiting on Hill Country Transit to kinda get off High Center. Their goal is to have another micro bus in Rockdale sometime in the next month or two. That's their goal. I can't speak as to what their goal is. All I can do is do what we can do. Um, right now, uh, we have got, uh, Apex, which donated, I think, five thousand to the Mark Center. They're gonna donate to the cause of paying for the rides, so people aren't paying for their rides. Um, we approved T One Energy today. We approved their abatement. Um, I talked to their- We approved T One Energy today, we approved their abatement, I talked to their local director today, and he's going to get with me Wednesday after we discuss things with our auditor to figure out how we can make this happen. They're going to donate money to make this happen, and what we're going to end up doing, the plan right now is to pull money, we, we, the Sandal Lake Solar Department, solar plant isn't going to be even starting for another two years, so they got a two-year extension, but they're paying for it. And so, we have that money that's coming into the budget, we got the first payment, I think, last week. And so, we're going to take some of that money to pay this, so that folks aren't paying to ride, that's our plan. And then, as the solar companies and as T One comes online, and some of these other things come online, as part of the abatement agreements with them, they have to do a certain amount of public service, meaning either they're going to do the work themselves, or they're going to put money into deals. And we've, we've listed the HOP, we've listed the Mark Center, we've listed the other ones. And so, as they start paying for the HOP, we'll just use that as reimbursement for what the county's going to do to make this work better. Next year, we, we had a meeting last Thursday of the month with Hill Country Transit, we have another Zoom meeting this win, this Thursday with them, and the whole discussion is how to do away with this ride, the cost of what the rides are right now. It's not working for any of the rural counties. I know Lampasas County and Corial County have the same issues, I talk to their judges usually about once a week, we have a conference call between the three of us, they're having the same issues with the cost, the cost is ridiculous. And, and our biggest complaint with Hill Country Transit is they're so focused on Fort Cavazos right now, that they've left, their main purpose was as a rural transit company, not as Fort Cavazos Transit, not as Colleen Transit, or Copper's Cove, or Belton, or Temple Transit. And so, we're, but we can't, we can't fix that in the next month, that's going to be something that'll have to be fixed next year. So, what we're focusing on right now is how to relieve our folks from having to pay these high prices for these rides. And so, we'll go ahead and pull that off of our funds, off of our general funds to pay that, and then we'll allow these companies that are coming in that are going to make donations to reimburse us for that, that's our plan. We'll vote on that on the twenty-third in Commissioner's Court, and, you know, try to make that happen for folks, because I know what we're going to do is we're going to take, they gave me the number of rides we had last year, we're down because people are having to pay, and so the ridership is down. So I asked them to give me the average for the last three years, actually, of what folks were riding when they weren't having to pay like they are. So we're going to take that, we're going to do the math, find out what it's going to pay at that rider rate, not at the rider rate right now, because I think if we paid it right now, it'd be about fourteen thousand dollars for the rest of the year. But if we take it based on what we've had the last three years, it's going to be about twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars. And we'll go ahead and do that, and then allow those companies to come in and reimburse us, and then that way, that fixes that problem, so that if we're paying for it, people will ride it more, and so those costs are going to go up. So I'd rather focus it on what they were riding when they were riding it full-time than what they're riding it right now, because they're just not riding it enough right now, because a lot of those folks are on fixed incomes and can't afford it. So, so that's where we are on this.
Will the reimbursement cover completely offset what the county's going to?
I think it will, in the end, and then whatever's left, we'll, we'll forward that to next year for the HOP stuff that we have to pay for the annual cost next year. So that's, that's the plan right now, but I, I do believe they will, and if they don't, it's okay, it'll be okay.
And has Hill Country addressed that they're potentially a little top-heavy in their management, or is that?
Well, yeah, the last meeting, last, last Thursday, we made it readily apparent that, that that's the main cause of their problems, is that they're top-heavy. They've got way too many directors and assistant directors, you go to Pecan Valley, or you go to Brazos Valley, they've got a director and assistant director. We've got a director and assistant director, two assistant directors for routes, two for maintenance, and all these other assistant directors that these other, these other places don't have, you know, thus the reason, like Mills County with five thousand people has one bus with Hill Country, they leave, they go to Pecan Gap, now they have three buses, and they're still not paying anything. So, they've got to address that, Commissioner Hubnik's on that board of directors, he's kind of being big on pushing that, and luckily for us, I know a lot of people have issues with her at times, but the mayor of Colleen is kind of on our, on our side with this, she's a, she's the mayor of Colleen, but she's a small-town girl, she grew up in small-town rural Texas, and so she agrees with us on this, which has really been an asset, because a lot of times, she doesn't always agree with me on things, so.
Well, we appreciate the county stepping up and, and doing that, and banking on the reimbursement.
Yeah, I, I think they'll do it, the, the company so far has been pretty good, T One, I think is going to be a good partner for not only the county, but for Rockdale. You know, they, they came to us, I told them, we'd get together with you one day, and with, with Tim, and sit down and have a lunch and talk to them, and, and we can address some of the things that the city needs as well. I think you've already talked to them, haven't you?
We did.
Yeah, okay.
Mayor Proton Perry and I met at their government affairs about a month ago, month and a half.
Yeah, as I said, now that he's got, now that they've got the abatement in place, they're going to be ready to sit down and really kind of get to work and help us out on some stuff, and so.
Great. Thank you, Judge, appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks for that update. Okay, I tried to jump to the consent agenda earlier, now we're there. Counsel, is there anything that you wanted to, I do have one item I'd like to have further discussion on, but is there anything counsel wanted further discussion on before we vote on the consent agenda? You're going to remove one item? What? You're going to remove one item and? I am, yeah, I'm just going to ask Chief Matters to expand information-wise on item nine, the inter-local agreement. I want to make sure counsel understands how that is, and what that is, and how it's going to work. Yes. So, I'll make a motion, we accept the consent agenda with the removal of item number nine for more discussion. Motion on the floor, and a second, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, we'll vote, all in favor said motion, signify, raise your right hand, motion passes. Go ahead, Chief.
So, as you all know, we've experienced, just like law enforcement nationwide, especially, more especially in Texas, we've experienced a lot of difficulty in recruiting new applicants for the police officer positions that we've had open now for, we've had two open, at least two open since October, since the beginning of the budget year. So we began, you know, we're, we're having constant talks between myself, the mayor, the city manager, council, there's always a discussion, how can we fill these positions, what can we do to recruit qualified applicants to our, our agency? And the simple answer is that, that there is no simple answer to that, it's a, it's a very complex issue that nationwide law enforcement is, is addressing and trying to address. But with that being said, we've discussed several options of what can we do to supplement our patrol or police services here in Rockdale until we can permanently fill these spots. With that, the idea was, was floated kind of in a, in a joint effort, actually, the sheriff and I have been talking for a little bit on this, and then we had a meeting not too long ago where the mayor brought up, hey, is there any way that we can maybe discuss with the sheriff's department about maybe compensating off-duty deputies to come over here and serve as, in the capacity of filling our open patrol spots and kind of bolster our numbers here? This gives us the police protection that we need during times of shortages, and also gives our current employees some time to take off and use their, their earned comp time or vacation time that they have not been able to use over the last, you know, six, nine months, because they're working non-stop overtime to cover those open shifts and make sure that we have mandatory coverage of the town. The sheriff was, was very in favor of this idea, as was I, and we worked out an agreement, an inter-local agreement, it should be in your packets, I believe, that basically, in a nutshell, is if we have an uncovered patrol position for a certain shift, that the sheriff's department would, as available, they had a deputy that would sign up for this, for this duty, much like an extra job, an off-duty job, that they would sign off to work security at an event somewhere, or something like that, when they're not normally on duty, the city of Rockdale would, would contract with that employee as a contract employee, and would pay them to come cover a twelve-hour patrol shift with our agency, which would provide one Rockdale officer and one deputy for every shift that would be open. The sheriff's department came up with this ILA, and I agree with it, inter-local agreement, I agree with it, I think it's a great opportunity for us to provide services for the city of Rockdale until we fill these positions. I believe this morning, Commissioner's Court ratified the agreement, thank you very much, Judge, for pushing it through, and thanks to the commissioners for that. And we're kind of looking at you all tonight to also do the same, to ratify the agreement, and, and hopefully you will see this as a, as a very worthwhile effort on, on everybody's part to just bring these services to the city of Rockdale until we can get them filled.
Jay, so are they going to, are we going to pay the, them directly, or are we going to pay?
So how this will work is the, the employees of the, of the sheriff's department who do sign up for these shifts will be paid by the county, they will turn in their regular time sheets, it'll have a special code assigned to time worked in Rockdale, so their finance department knows, okay, this, these hours for this much money, we're going to invoice the city of Rockdale for that, and then, once the city of Rockdale receives that payment, or that invoice, and I confirm the time sheet, just that deputy was here during this time, then the city of Rockdale will, will reimburse Malum County for that. All income taxes and things like that will be paid through the county as, as that employee would normally be paid.
It's going to be a silly question, I know, so will they be in patrol car from the county, or a Rockdale patrol?
They will, they will drive their county vehicles, wear their county uniforms, the city of Rockdale will be out no expenses other than fuel for that vehicle while it's patrolling the city of Rockdale, and the actual payment for the officer's time working that shift. The city of Rockdale will not, they're a contract employee, we will not pay any fringe benefits, insurance, or anything associated with this, it would just be strictly the salary of the hours they worked, and the fuel that they used while patrolling the city of Rockdale.
I'm glad that the county's working with this, I think it's dynamite, is that something that we need to let the public know, citizens or not, to kind of let them, I mean, not that they would argue with a deputy, but just to say, hey, yeah, they are?
I think it'd be good for them to know that we're trying to be proactive, I mean, safety is everything.
Sure.
I, like, I will make a social media post in regards to this, not that everybody follows me, but I think it's something that we should post on our website as well, as on our city's social media page as well, to make sure our citizens are informed.
Because they'll be, you know, they can get things wrong, and they'll take it the direction they want to take it, so.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. I think it's a really good deal, and, like I said, it's only as needed, so there's nothing in the contracts that we have to use deputies for this amount of time, or this many deputies for this amount of time, it's as needed. And so, if I were to fill all of my open positions, but say I had two officers who haven't taken a vacation in two years, and they decided, okay, I need to take a vacation now, because I need a break, and we have an open spot, I can call upon the sheriff's department and say, hey, we have a spot open on these dates, can you fill it? If they have a deputy available, wants to sign up, make some extra money for he and his family, then they're welcome to come fill it. If not, we can assign somebody to an overtime shift to cover that spot, but, but it's, it's good to have, it's a good tool for us to have, for the city of Rockdale to have that coverage, and to have that, that, that safety net, knowing that we can be covered in the event that we're left open again like we are now, so.
I'm going to make sure we have enough officers on the street at all times.
Right.
But we're not going to, you know, go overboard with it, I'm always watching the bottom line as well as, and I'm, and I'm concerned, because our officers have been working ungodly hours, I mean, away from their families where they work, you know, two shifts in a row, or, I don't know if they do that, but, I mean.
Yes.
They've had, they've had as many hours overtime sometimes as they do work regular time.
Now, we won't, we won't make an officer work night and day shift like that, it's a safety issue, but they've gone multiple days, up, up to week without a day off, and on a twelve-hour shift, that's a lot, and this line of work, it's a lot. And, and to do that for months on end, you know, our, our first responders need time to, home with their family, away from this job, just to decompress from what it is we deal with on daily basis, and, and so, they, they've earned it, they work hard, and so, it's concern for their safety, you know, their mental health, their well-being, longevity in this career as well, and, you know, I just want to say, I really appreciate, as the chief, I really appreciate the efforts from, from Mayor Rodham and Tim Kelty, and of course, Sheriff Clor, for being such a valuable partner to us at all times. Sheriff Clor and the sheriff's department have been just invaluable to us, and as an asset, in assisting us with our needs, and, and just, just such a great relationship we have with them, and I really appreciate that, so, yeah.
Thank you, Chief, for your efforts, all your efforts that you put into this as well, to help make it happen, and Judge Whitmire, thank you to, to the county, and obviously, I've talked to Sheriff Clor and thanked him already, but want to make sure that's said publicly, we, I, as mayor, and I know counsel echoes this, sincerely appreciate his support in being willing to work with us and negotiate through this inter-local agreement.
One hundred percent.
It's a win for our citizens.
Absolutely.
And it's a win for our officers that have been working so much overtime, and not taking really any time off for themselves and their families, so.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
I know it's an as-needed position, but are we scheduling some of this out when we know that there's going to be stuff, so we're kind of ahead of it, rather than just calling at the last minute?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, we, we, you know, it's easy to schedule out when you have openings, right?
Right.
Because we know the shifts aren't covered, and so as it stands right now, in anticipation of this being ratified, we've already scheduled out the remainder of June and all the way through July.
Okay.
Potential open shifts.
Sure.
Now, if we hire somebody in, that'll be one less shift that we got to fill, you know what I mean, so, but yes, we scheduled this out, and the intention is to schedule it out a month or two ahead of time, and then we can always cancel if, you know, if we fill the spot, or we just don't need it anymore, but, you know.
The ones that wouldn't be scheduled would if, if somebody calls in sick, but the chief says never happens.
Right.
Yeah, luckily, we don't have, really have that problem with officers calling in sick all that much, they know what's at stake.
Let me know how that works, I'd like to use your techniques.
Absolutely, well, it's dedication is just what it is, it's just, they're dedicated to the community and the job, so.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I think this requires a vote to ratify, is that correct, Tim?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this will be a separate vote from affirming the, or voting to approve the consent agenda, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll ask for a vote first to, counsel, to approve the consent agenda as written.
We already did that.
We got that one.
We just made a motion?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion. That we accept the ratification of the agreement between the Malum County Sheriff's Department and the City of Rockdale Police Department that was removed from the consent agenda, number nine.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second on the floors, are any discussion? Be none will vote, all in favor said motion, signify, raise your right hand, motion passes. Moving on to the regular agenda, counsel, I'm going to throw you another curve, and we have a gentleman from out of town who is on the, representing the Red Stag Grill here, and he's number nineteen on the agenda, is Tim here?
Jim, you may?
Jim, Jim? So, Tim, will you be able to answer any questions that may have been directed to Jim regarding item nineteen?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay. So I'm going to move up item nineteen, up to the top of the regular agenda, and that item is going to be before you right now. Matt, welcome. Matt is here representing the Red Stag Grill, which is a new eatery and restaurant and bar and other things coming into downtown Rockdale. So, counsel, the item is to consider, take any necessary action to approve an incentive program with the Red Stag Grill for partial rebate of the mixed beverage alcohol tax. Tim, you want to take that?
Certainly. So the Red Stag Grill is working to open a restaurant here in downtown, and they're planning a, a huge investment in the city, almost a million dollars in improvements to the building, it's going to be a full-service, sit-down restaurant with a, a pretty impressive menu, and they requested from the MDD last week, an economic development incentive of a rebate of fifty percent of their mixed-use alcoholic beverage sales tax, that they, that they'll, that they'll pay the state, to the state, and the state will send to us. That amounts to about twenty-two hundred dollars a year, they asked for that for ten years, so their total mixed-use tax is about forty-four hundred. They originally had suggested that we set up another, another organization to help organize in the downtown activities and stuff like that. What I suggested to the MDD is that there's a number of different groups that we already have, with the Downtown Association, the Chamber of Commerce, and the like, that will, that kind of already carry on that, so I was, I recommended that they look at having the, in the incentive agreement, that they contribute that money to activities, and that reinvest in the downtown through either improvements or activities that, in collaboration with other businesses, or with the existing organizations that they have here. Um, and, so, I think, in, in, in your package, you see the designs and plans for the building, um, and the investment that they plan to make. And so, I do recommend this to the council.
So it's just fifty percent of the alcohol tax, which equates to twenty-two-hundredish dollars?
That was.
If those numbers are accurate.
Right, so they're, that, that's based on, they estimate two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars in alcohol sales annually. If they do that, that's where that number comes from.
Okay. And would this transfer, if Red Stag establishes this and then sells the business, does this sort of thing transfer in the sale of a business?
I think you did write that into that, didn't, it would be, that it would transfer to a new owner if they sold the business?
I believe it's in there, but we'll check.
I think, as I read through the agreement, it is, it is transferable to a new owner.
That, that's the only issue I think I would have.
Is there other incentives, the way I wanna make sure that I'm not this month agreeing to fifty percent of alcohol, next month, uh, fifty percent of a sign, and in the following month, fifty percent of this? I, I wanna make sure I'm.
They may have applied for.
I'm looking for inclusive number of what you're asking for. Uh, do you know if there's other stuff, uh, that you all are gonna be coming to the city or to the MDD? Okay.
This is at the corner of Main and Cameron, right? This the one that's the Rubio Building?
No, it's the old Snug.
It's the old Snug, it's right in the middle. Okay, cause I, I put in one-twenty-one East and it came up as that.
The downstairs and the upstairs.
That makes sense then, okay. Cause I put that address in and it just brought me up on that corner, and I thought that seemed weird to demo all that.
With, with, they're having boxing and all that.
Okay.
Yeah.
One door for sure.
From the library, right, down?
Okay. I'm gonna type that in, it just brought it up in the corner, I thought that was so strange, so. First, thank you for coming to Rockdale, we need to, always need restaurants. Thank you for coming to Rockdale.
Oh, we're excited.
Y'all have one of these now, or y'all?
Not currently, no.
Okay.
Matt, you wanna share a little of your history with restaurant business?
Sure, sure, if you don't mind.
Yeah, please.
And thank you for having me tonight, and I appreciate escalating up to the top of the list. Um, Red Stag's a, a special project, it is. Uh, the investment shows it and whatnot. Uh, this is from the Elsner family, um, Jim and Joanne Elsner, uh, fantastic people. I've had an opportunity to be with them for close to twenty years now. Uh, I am a former chef of Maggiano's Little Italy, uh, was with the, uh, brand for twenty-six years. I've had a great chef career, and I've also had a great opportunity to entertain the Elsners through the years. And we've just bonded over food and wine and celebrations and whatnot. And while the Red Stag isn't a, a business investment, it's also something that the Elsners feel really good about giving back to the community. Um, they, they love Rockdale, and they love the, the community and the folks in it, and they really want to broaden, uh, the dining experiences in the, in the city, uh, so that folks don't have to go to Houston, or College Station, or Austin, uh, for a celebratory event, or, you know, just some great, uh, healthy cooked food and prepared by chef. Um, you have lots of great restaurants in the town, and they are fantastic, and we're glad and proud to be joining, uh, the ranks with them. But we want to, uh, provide a place that, has anybody been to Maggiano's before by chance? Okay. Uh, it is a place of celebration. This is where you go for graduations, uh, you go to celebrate your anniversary. Uh, it's special, and that's what we want to bring to the community, is something that, that conveys that. Great food, great service, and elevated service in that, and creating those relationships to where we're part of the community and we get to know you as family, and we get to celebrate live together. Um, I have a great passion for food and wine, uh, so do the Elsners. And we, uh, are gonna make some special things happen, uh, with this restaurant, one of the things being, uh, uh, underground wine cellar. And we're really excited about it, so we can house some fantastic, uh, wines for celebrations and whatnot. But, you know, just creating those experiences that we all love, we also want to make sure that, you know, this is not a fine dining restaurant. This is a place you can go to every day and enjoy. And it will have a great menu with some, uh, great varieties, uh, anywhere from a fantastic gourmet burger to a, a forty-four farm stein. And we'll have pasta, salads, and whatnot, but all in a healthy way of cooking and techniques, but full of flavor. And I look forward to the opportunity to be in with you all. I'm the new kid in the neighborhood, so I'm getting used to my new backyard, but as soon as I learn it, uh, it's gonna be great. And I love the community of Rockdale, I've been driving through it for years, I've stopped here quite a bit, and I just really appreciate the, the Elsners giving us this opportunity to do this together.
I've got a question, and this is directed to Tim, it's related to you. Uh, because of your location, your deliveries, that alleyways and very bad need, that's city, is it not? Or is, do, I don't know how alleys work, I'm just asking, is that?
Alley is the right.
Okay. Cause that's pretty rough back there.
Yeah.
Driving through there, okay.
Is it too early to ask what percentage of your customer base you think is coming from Rockdale, Malum County, and then beyond?
Um, you know, percentages, um, we're gonna try to get it to where it's an everyday grill to where, uh, the, the town feels comfortable coming in and going, hey, I can get a, a great, you know, burger, or a great pasta, or whatnot. We're gonna be driving that hard, cause we are about the community. Uh, but we also wanna pull from outside. Um, you know, we'd love people to come in from College Station and say, you know, the public's great, but, you know, Red Stag Grill's better, you know? Um, we wanna be a destination restaurant as well, and that's part of why our investment is as big as it is, is because we wanna make it special. I couldn't give you a, a breakdown, though.
We will be able to get a breakdown from the MDD, once people, once it's open and people start coming, they have software that'll track that for us, so, yes. And I, I want council to know how they came up with this name, Red Stag Grill. I'm sure some of you remember the name Red Hogan. I think Red was actually a mayor for the city of Rockdale at one time while he was alive. Well, the Beaver Creek Ranch, which the Elsners own, had a rogue red stag out there, which is an exotic deer-type animal, and they're huge. And it was damaging everything, and, and Red Hogan, while he was still alive, which he was a very avid hunter, went out and shot that red stag for them. So that's why they're naming it the Red Stag Grill, both after Red Hogan and that red stag, so. It's bringing a little more history back into the town as well.
But is the old Snug building on your side?
Yes.
What's your signature dish?
Uh, signature dish, uh, that's gonna be a good one, depends on what you like, but, uh. What's my favorite? Uh, we'll definitely have a lobster carbonare on there, and I know, once you say the name lobster, uh, you know, you're sitting there, price tag and whatnot, but this is a great dish, the linguine pasta and, uh, lobster claw and tail, uh, with snap peas and apple-smoked bacon and a truffle cream sauce. But.
I feel really suspicious. Just to let you know, sometimes we eat in executive session.
Wine cellar, right there, wine cellar, right there. Anytime, anytime.
Thank you, Matt.
No, thank you.
Thank you for coming to Rockdale.
Council, I will entertain action on this item.
Great. I'll be glad to, Mr. Nicholson, thank you for being here.
Oh, you bet.
I'm excited, uh, for Rockdale, and especially excited for the east side, you're definitely gonna dress that up some, so, just all around, and I love Italian food, so I'll be there, so, um, I'd like to go ahead and accept the MDD's recommendation and approve the agreement, the three-eighty Economic Development Incentive Agreement with Red Stag Grill as Red.
I still have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry?
I'm, I'm still a little concerned about the transferability of it.
It is in there.
I'm sorry?
It is in there, sir.
So it will transfer?
Ten years.
Okay.
Doesn't matter who owns it for ten years.
But are we good with that? That, that's.
That's what you're wanting.
That's the part that concerns me a little bit. That's the part that concerns me a little bit. I'm all for, I think it's a great place, a great idea, a great concept. How do we know what comes in, you know? And I want you to be there twenty years, but.
Does it say, Barbara, as long as it's a restaurant, or does it say just, I guess what I'm concerned with, something goes haywire and somebody buys it as a bar, turns it into a bar, now we're giving them fifty percent of all they do is alcohol? Is that, how do we protect ourselves from that?
Shouldn't affect you guys.
No, that's what I'm saying. Anything that happens with that shouldn't affect them.
There's nothing in this agreement that addresses subsequent use being different from the original use.
Is that doable? Is that, can we, can we add that? Can we make a, a motion? Can we?
Are non-transferable?
Non-transfer, like it sets to stay with the Red Stag ownership?
Section is the transferability.
Tax ID or something like that?
Four feet.
That's what you're saying, like a beer joint just goes in there.
Yeah, and then they got a, a fifty percent advantage of it.
So you don't want it transferable?
I don't mind it being transferable as long as it's in a similar use business.
Okay.
Could that be included in the vote to approve that verbiage?
Oh, yeah, I mean, if you.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that part, I'm just.
Okay.
And would, would another group have to reapply for that? Or would they just automatically get it?
I wouldn't, I don't wanna overcomplicate it.
Right, no, I don't either.
I agree.
Presently, there is nothing about a reapplication, and it's just an automatically next business.
For ten years.
Or ten years.
For the total of ten years, but.
Cumulatively.
If you are wanting something a little more, trying to keep it as a restaurant slash with all of the other lovely things they're offering, um, I, I don't.
If it could just say a similar business.
So, so.
B says, the city acknowledges and agrees that should the company be sold or assigned to another company, um, could you say that sold or s- assigned to another full-service restaurant during the time of the agreement, the city's obligation under the agreement will not be affected?
Something to that effect.
Yeah, I think what Lynn's getting at, don't let me speak for her, is like saying to just say, we hope y'all there a, a hundred years.
Right.
In five years, something happened, and then y'all closed down, and then just a normal, you know, pool hall beer joint comes in, well, that's not fair to, you know, the cliffs and the, who are down the road, they're, they're on, they're behind the eight ball now.
I think that's fair.
So.
Just being cautious.
Yeah, so.
Or just, would you not say just non-transferable?
And then they can always come back and reply.
I don't see what that gains you. As long as it's a similar business, just let them, let it, let it keep riding.
Can you do that verbiage, Barbara?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you want?
You're gonna amend your motion, councilman?
That, that need, you need, will need to amend the, uh.
Okay.
Amend the motion, uh.
Okay, so I, oh, okay, so.
Let's just, hold on.
Can we just add an amendment?
So what, we're gonna do this, this motion is not received a second.
Yeah.
Okay, so this motion is going to die for the lack of a second.
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay? And now we're going to have a new motion.
Okay.
Counsel, I'll entertain action on this item.
Can I suggest this, can I suggest a motion for y'all?
Sure. Absolutely.
That the council, make a motion to approve the three-eighty agreement with a three, with the Red Stag Grill, understanding that, um, item four-B be amended to say the city acknowledges and agrees that should the company be sold or assigned to another full-service restaurant during the time of the agreement, is in effect, the city's obligation under the agreement will not be affected.
You get all that?
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
Daniel, you got this one.
Lynn was doing it. Try me again.
Can we, uh, just make, you can make that the motion.
So I think council is, uh, allowed for council to recommend their motion to, um, follow what?
City manager.
City manager Kelty recommended. Barbara, is that allowable?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I, I second it.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so for clarity on this, so for clarity on this, we have a motion on the floor and a second. The motion on the floor is to follow the guidelines, uh, of this motion based on the recomis- recommendation of city manager Kelty. There's a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Be no discussion, we'll vote. All in favor said motion, signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes.
Look forward to coming there.
Hey, I look forward to spending time with each of you.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it.
Mayor Rodham, thank you.
Yes, sir, you're welcome, thank you.
Judge, we're available all week, you're gonna need help over there.
Okay, moving on. Regular, uh, agenda item eleven, consider take any necessary action. Authorizing the mayor and the city manager to sign a letter of engagement for audit services with Brooks Watson and Company LLC. Tim?
Yes, so the, um, this item is on the agenda due to our, our previous audit retiring, and also our charter requirement that we change auditors every three terms. Um, if you recall, last year, we tried to go through a process and wouldn't, could not get any, uh, proposals after two efforts, so we went ahead and, um, went, uh, back with the same auditor. Um, but this year, we sent out the audits, the request for qualifications early. Um, we got, I think, uh, four responses from four different auditors. Um, we interviewed two of those auditors that, that we felt scored the highest and were most worthwa- worthwhile, um, and are recommending Brooks Watson. Brooks Watson is a company that's extremely respected throughout the state. They do, um, um, audits primarily in the Houston area, but also all the way over into the Austin area. Um, and, um, they, what I was impressed with is that the number of audits on cities that they perform on cities that are similarly sized to Rockdale. Um, and so, when we, when we completed that interview, they provided a, a proposal, um, which is very, very competitive, uh, compared to what we've paid in the past. Um, and so, we are, uh, recommending that they will, there's a new component to the audit that is a annual comprehensive financial report. Um, it's a set of financial statements that, um, it's in compliance with the general accounting standards of the, uh, the Government Accounting Standards Board, um, and is a thoroughly detailed presentation of Rockdale's, uh, financial condition, activities, and balances for each year. Um, that's a specific form that they will help us prepare, so.
Thank you, Tim. Counsel, any questions?
So the forty-three thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty out of the general fund, that's per year?
Yes, sir.
And then the six thousand is for the MDD, so I'm assuming they're gonna audit the city and the MDD?
They will audit both, both, yes.
Counsel, any other questions?
How much reinventing of the will does an audit firm have from firm to firm if we do this every three years?
No, they're doing it every year.
I know, but after three years.
It's a change.
Our charter says we're gonna change.
You know what?
Audit. I'm saying, I'm wondering, are we being charged?
It is, it is not.
Amount of money to.
Cost-effective generally to change audit firms that frequently? I will probably, and, and I don't wanna get off too far off topic, but I'm gonna be recommending we do a charter review committee, and that's one of the provisions that I probably.
My question was going.
Will recommend.
Yeah, startup needs.
Yeah.
Revising. But we have, we basically have three years before we have to, that would have to come true, or we will. And I'm, and I need to get clarification, cause the odd, the, the charter says that you can't have them for more than three consecutive terms. So if we're hiring them for a three-year con- under a three-year contract, is that one term, or is that three terms?
You asking me or Barbara?
I'm asking Barbara.
Oh.
You have to define term. It's not defined in there.
It's not defined in the charter.
So that would be what she needs to do.
Okay.
Term of a council member is three years, so that's three years. There you go. That's the term. It's the term. You're on the hook for nine years, sir.
Counsel, any other questions? I'll entertain action on this item, counsel.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, uh, authorize the mayor and the city manager to sign a letter of engagement for audit services with Brooke Watson and Company LLC.
Second.
A motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Being known will vote. All in favor said motion signified by raise your right hand. Motion passes. Agenda item twelve, consider take any necessary action on city council board liaison appointments. Tim, are you taking this?
So, he sure, and I think Shanna helped prepare the.
Yes, she did. Thank you, Shanna.
Thank you, Shanna. But anyways, so this is another charter requirement that requires the mayor to appoint, uh, the liaison to the boards and commissions and committees, um, and I think traditionally that's done here at a council meeting, uh, following the election. So, right now, we have, um, the P and Z, the Parks Board, Airport Board, Sanitary Committee, the Library Board, and the MDD, um, that meet, um, some meet monthly, some meet twice a month, some meet quarterly. But they all require a council liaison appointment.
So, I'm the one to appoint these, and, and I'm looking over this list, and I see council member Starnes represents, uh, two of these. Council member Starnes, would your feelings be hurt if I removed you from one of those?
They would not be hurt at all.
Okay.
They enjoy a break.
So before.
Share the wealth, Starnes.
Share something where you work.
Go ahead, Lynn.
I do a very, very poor job, um, the liaison for the airport board. They meet in the middle of the day. It just doesn't work for me. I'll continue to do a poor job if nobody else wants to do it. But if somebody wants it, it's not gonna hurt my feelings, because I don't feel like I represent them well.
So, um, here are my thoughts. I was going to relieve, uh, council member Starnes of one of his representation duties and appoint council member Willie to one of these. But I'll ask council, is there, council, is anyone else interested in representing, uh, as the airport, the represent, uh, for the airport board that meets once a month?
They may be happy with me.
Okay. Sounds like council's happy with me. Council member Starnes, um, since you duly held these two positions, i- is, and I'm not putting you on the spot here, and I, I may just choose the first one that your name is on here. Is that fair enough?
That's perfect.
Okay. Uh, council member Willie, I'm going to appoint you to represent the city in regards to the P and Z board?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Council member Starnes?
Yeah.
You will continue to represent the city council on the Parks Board. Council member Perry, you'll continue to, on the airport board. Council member Oliveris, uh, the Cemetery Committee. Council member Melton, the Library Board. Council member Caffey, uh, the MDD.
Fantastic.
Thank you. Appreciate y'alls dedicated service. Okay.
We need action.
Tim, is that set? Do we need any action on that, Tim, or is that just an appointment that?
That works.
Okay. Item number thirteen, consider take any necessary action on appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill the remainder of terms expiring, uh, February twenty-twenty-six and February twenty-twenty-seven.
Mayor, I would ask, um, so there are, there are two candidates that the P and Z interviewed, Janie Mendoza and Nathan Flores. I don't know if either of them are here tonight.
They're both here.
They're most probably here.
All right. Uh, but when, if, if they're, they are nominated, so one has to be nominated for one, um, for the.
One term.
Post-expiring, uh, February twenty-twenty-six, and the other one for February twenty-twenty-seven.
Okay.
Okay.
Counsel, any questions? I'll entertain action on these nominations from council?
So.
Do we do them separately?
We were going to do them separately, because they're two different terms that expire different times.
So Bob's is, uh, five-twenty-five?
He's expired.
Well, has his resignation at five-twenty-five, it expires in two, two of twenty-seven?
Right.
February twenty-seven.
February twenty-seven. Where does the other one?
Uh, Daniel's going out.
Twenty-six, but I'm gone.
Yep. Daniel's gonna come back. This is already over. This is already over.
So one of y'all, we're gonna go through twenty, February of twenty-twenty-six, and the other one in February of twenty-twenty-seven. Okay. I'll make a motion that we, so do them one at a time, you said?
Yes, please.
We, uh, appoint Janie Mendoza for the, uh, remainder of council, uh, Daniel Willie's term expiring in February of twenty-twenty-six.
I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and second on the floor. Is there any discussion? Be no discussion, we'll vote. All in favor said motion signify, motion passes. And we need a motion for the term expiring February twenty-twenty-seven.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Nathan Flores for Mr. Slubod's term, which expires in February of twenty-twenty-seven.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? And I will vote. All in favor said motion signify by ra- motion passes. Janie, Nathan, thank you all. We appreciate it.
Welcome.
Volunteering.
No quitting.
Agenda item fourteen, consider take any necessary action on appointment to the Rockdale MDD Board to fill the remainder of a term that expires, uh, September of twenty-twenty-six. Tim?
So with, uh, Commissioner Slubod's, um, resignation because he's moving out of town? Or chair, I guess, board member, uh, Slubod, um, there's a, there is one vacancy on the MDD Board to fill. Um, and previously, the MDD Board interviewed three applicants, including Jim Morris and Garrett Mu- uh, Muston, when they interviewed, uh, Bob Slubod, and they recommended all three of them to fill that one position. So, um, they wanted to go ahead and recommend, um, those two also, one of those two to fill their, the positions.
Great.
Is that correct, Jim?
Yes.
Are they both here tonight, both?
Yes.
Muston? Oh, they're, okay, that's what I thought.
Counsel, uh, would anyone like to make a recommendation?
So. What's that?
Go ahead. Do you have a question?
When, how long does this term go?
It expires on September of twenty-twenty-six. This term expires on September of twenty-twenty-six.
And when is your next available position?
So we, or we look at whoever expires, uh, in September, the term, uh, in September thirtieth starts October first. So we'll have another round of, uh, folks whose terms are coming due, and we'll talk about that in August.
Oh, so here pretty soon you'll have another position. Am I understanding that right? That's what I was thinking, I was gonna take both.
But we don't know if, if the incumbent is gonna wanna give up the spot or not.
Oh, gotcha.
Too many board members.
Yeah, we just have the one.
Potentially. Okay.
They're both great applicants in the.
Yes, they're both well-qualified.
Yeah, very qualified. The tallies are real close, too. I wish we could take you both right now.
Can I ask him a question?
Maybe we could give him, can we give him a, a minute just to?
I don't wanna put him on the spot, but.
Maybe they'd like to. He said he would.
You're welcome to ask a question, yes.
If, if, if you were not selected tonight, would you still consider it in September? Not even gonna have feelings, or we gotta pick from two good candidates. We need them both.
Yes.
Okay, good. I, I like that answer.
Um, can you refresh my memory? I feel like, have you applied before?
Yes, yeah.
Right?
They both were on the application last time.
Right, I recall, okay.
Well, I'm gonna jump out there. Since Jim said he would stick around for the next go-around, I'm gonna take him up on that. I'm gonna make a motion that we appoint Garrett Muston to fill the position. It's going to be vacated by, uh.
Bob Slubod.
Bob Slubod, that will take him through September of twenty-twenty-six.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second on the floor by council member Oliveris. Um, is there any discussion? Be no discussion, we'll vote. All in favor said motion signified by raise your right hand. Motion passes. Thank you. Congratulations. Jim, thank you.
Thank you both.
Please come back.
Please.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank y'all both.
We need great guys like y'all, no doubt.
Absolutely. Sided for our MDD.
Thank you, Kathy.
Now, in, in September. Uh, item fifteen, agenda item fifteen, can take, consider take any necessary action regarding the amendment to the HR policy.
We got a question on the last agenda item for you.
Judge Whitmire, we, we have a question on the last agenda item for you. I'm joking.
You know I don't mind talking.
Thanks for coming.
We'll see y'all, thank you.
Okay, Tim, are you taking this, or Tiffany?
I, I can take it. Um, this is, uh, you know, one of the, with Tiffany coming on bo- board several months ago, she'd been looking at the, the policy, um, our, our overall personnel policy. Um, and this is one of the issues that I wanted to make sure that we got corrected. The current policy is, does not, basically states that exempt employees do not receive em- uh, um, overtime pay. But we had, uh, Barbara had adopted a internal memo that basically allowed them to accumulate it and get paid out when they leave, um, which is really unheard of in, in city government. But, and that's kind of what started this, but really, there's only like two small paragraphs regarding comp time in our policy, and that's why, um, we really looked at it and took the time, and we went over this with staff. The city attorney has reviewed it. Um, basically what this does is it, it allows for, um, non- non-exempt employees to also continue to earn comp time, but it caps it at forty, and after that, they have to be paid, uh, for the, the, uh, comp time that they, or excuse me, for the overtime that they accrue. They have to be paid their overtime rate. They accrue comp time at a, at time and a half, um, and it also states that at the end of the fiscal year, any comp time that they have accrued that they haven't used is paid out at, at the last paycheck of the year. Uh, for exempt employees, they will, uh, be capped at, at forty hours, so they can still accrue and use comp time. But it stipulates that, um, that they won't be paid that out when they leave the city's, uh, employees. And also, it, there's a, there's an allowance in here, so for, for employees, there's a, there's, I think, three or four exempt employees that have accrued, uh, um, excessive amounts of comp time. We will allow them to keep that on the books and use it as they're able to, um, but they, um, will still will not be able to take that with them. And, and then finally, um, I'll shoot, there's one more thing I was gonna tell you.
This addresses us taking on a long-time liability.
This, this actually removes the long-time liability from the city, long-term liability from the city. Oh, uh, it also, it also requires, um, employees to use comp time at, at a half, half-day basis. So in other words, somebody couldn't, if, has, has a significant amount of over, of comp time accrued, they can't take a week off and call that comp time. They have to, they, they could, they could potentially take a, no, we said they couldn't use it with combination. So they can take basically a half-day off using comp time.
So, yeah, they can find it with, uh, vacation, uh, they can only use it in half-day increments, so we put the verbiage half-day, uh, that some of us have eight hours, some have twelve-hour shifts. And I think the biggest thing is that, like you said, it's gonna take the liability off. And also with our hourly staff, them being, being paid out at the end of the year, that prevents from five years down the road, us paying them at a higher rate. So, cause they have to be paid out at that time and a half.
So did, did I hear you say you can take forty hours of comp time?
You can accrue.
Accrue forty hours of comp time, but if you don't use it within that calendar year, fiscal year, whatever it is, you're automatically paid out. So everybody starting with a.
Only for non-exempt employees. Non-exempt employees would be paid out. Exempt employees wouldn't.
What's, tell, what, what, what does that mean?
An exempt employee is a salaried employee.
Non-exempt is hourly.
Non-exempt is hourly.
And which one would be paid out and which one would?
An hourly employee that earned, that, that accrues comp time, the city has to, according to Fair Label Standards Act, the city has to pay them time and a half. They can either pay them in, uh, in an hour and a half off in the future, or they can pay them an hour and a half of their hourly salary.
Just out of curiosity, why, why accrue, accrue comp time to be, just pay it out and be done with it?
Well, it is, it, it allows some flexibility, and the, and the comp time is actually whether they used, whether they accrue comp time or paid out is entirely up to the employee.
Yeah, they get, the, our employee gets the option to either bank it, like they can accumulate it and use it for another day, or they can go ahead and be paid their hourly overtime. It's just the way it was, so we try to pick a fair, medium spot. There are a few other cities, I did a lot of research about other cities that pay comp time. So I, I read several policies from Austin to Lubbock to all kinds of places. So we try to pick that happy, medium place. The employees are granted a lot of time off, and that's why we tried to cap it, too, because, yeah, we need our employees to be rested and have their time, but we also need the city to function. So we need our staff present as well.
It, it just adds a whole nother level of accounting.
I have a question also.
It is, it is complicated already. This actually kind of simplifies it, other than the cap.
Yeah.
So this is, is it more of the non-exempt, the hourly people this is affecting?
No, it's more of the salary.
Council member Oliveris?
Yes, can you clarify for me again? You stated that they can only take it in half-day increments? Is that standard across? That just sounds like, what am I gonna do with a half-day?
Well.
Is that standard, or is that something we?
Well, I think.
You can take two half-days.
It might.
Right?
Yeah, you can take like.
I think what she's saying is you can't take one hour here.
Yeah, you can't take less than a half-day.
Oh, you can't take less than a half-day?
No, you can't take more than a half-day.
That sounds strange to me.
Oh.
So if somebody, if somebody has to take off because, you know, their kid has a baseball game and they wanna take off early to go to their.
They have to use.
They have to use half-day.
Half-day, is that standard?
They could use a half, they could use comp time up to a half-day to do that. They could, if they wanna take off an hour early, then they just clock out an a, a half, an hour early.
They can't take a whole day off?
They wouldn't be able to take a whole day off of comp time under this policy. They would be able to.
How does the staff feel about that, like the actual workers? I mean, you're HR, and thank you again for buttoning my dress, I appreciate you. But how do the overall employees feel about that? Is there a complaint? Is there a concern about, hey, why can't I take a whole day?
Not really.
No?
A lot of our hourly staff doesn't accumulate it. So our hourly staff, I think, would probably have more problems with that, but our salary staff, you know, they have a lot of other time that they can use a lot, so, um, I haven't really had a lot of pushback on it.
Okay.
There's only about a, maybe a handful of, of hourly employees that say, I, I wanna have the comp time banked. Most people will take the out.
I wanna be fair, but I don't wanna upset our employees either.
So, and, um.
And I think it was just mostly also, like you said, that compromise, because with all the vacation time that they have, all the sick time, well, then they also got all this comp time, too, so like I said, we, we also need our staff here to be able to function. So at least if they're half-day here, that's work getting done, and then they still get their leisure time. So, I mean, and they only maybe accumulate an hour, maybe a comp time, a pay period, maybe some, a little more, maybe four hours.
Okay.
But that's in a two-week period, so.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
Counsel, any other questions on this agenda item?
One of the, Tim, how do they, how are we accumulating this? Where's the comp time come from?
So, like I said, with hourly staff, they can elect to bank it, um, instead of being paid the overtime.
So if they get, if they work for, if they work forty-two hours in a week?
Okay.
They would have three hours of comp time for, for a hourly employee. For a salaried employee, if, say I worked fifty hours in a week, which is pretty common, I would only bank ten hours of comp time.
Which, like I said, is pretty generous, because where I come from, you, if you're an exempt staff, you just, if you work fifty hours a week, because that's what it takes to get your job done, then you work fifty hours a week.
That's where I always came from.
Welcome to Perry.
If you're a salary employee, you work forty-six hours.
People didn't wanna go salary, they wanna stay hourly.
Yeah, so I, I've never tracked comp time for salaried employees in any other city until I came here, and we actually have comp time for salaried employees that is banked on our.
And because it was, uh, a memo that was in place, we didn't wanna just pull it out from underneath them totally, um, saying, well, we're not doing comp time anymore. Cause that would've been the easiest thing, however, like you said, to be fair, um, you know, we still try to get that happy, meeting place.
I can appreciate that.
Counsel.
Thank you.
If, if you, I feel like if y'all have massaged it the best y'all can, then we have to, that's y'all's job. We have to accept that for what is worth.
And like you said, that the comp policy before was, um, it put a lot, a lot of building on the city, cause it's like literally one for the, I think it was the hourly or something, was like two sentences. So there was not a lot of verbiage in there, and like you said, there, we were paying out exempt staff an excessive amount of money, you know, when they were leaving. Uh, there was no protection in place, so.
And you said there's a handful that still have.
Of sal- of, of salaried staff, I think there's four, four employees that have more than forty hours.
Whittles away at that?
I'm sorry?
This plan whittles away to get that back in check?
Yeah, so if they get down to that forty, then they're not gonna accumulate more. It'll be down to that forty, and they have to utilize, you know, the table of forty.
Counsel, any other questions? Thoughts, comments, entertain action on this agenda items?
I'll make a motion that we accept staff recommendation for the policy change in regards to comp time for exempt and non-exempt employees.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Being no discussion, we'll vote, all in favor said motion, signify by raise your right hand, motion passes. Agenda item sixteen, conduct a public hearing and consider take any necessary action on the second reading of an ordinance amending section fourteen point zero two point one two three sign requirements. I have seven nineteen PM, I officially open this public hearing at seven nineteen PM. Ben?
When the public hearing is closed, we'll get to my comments, but in case anybody wants to speak, I'll let them speak.
I got a good question, so that night when I left here after the meeting, I'm not seeing anybody out, I saw Chamber had one of the flashing signs. And so, is anybody grandfathered in, or is it just they, this new sign rules, get on board and move ahead?
So.
They have electronic one in there, it was changing, I guess, I didn't see during time.
Wicker than.
Yeah, well, and I just, I went, oh damn.
They'll, they'll get notified, so it's, it's a two-part answer. That sign is grandfathered in as how it looks, the structure of it, but as far as the message changing, will not be grandfathered in.
Is there anyone here who wants to speak, ask questions, comment during the public hearing phase of this? Anyone present? Okay, I'm gonna close, being none, I'm gonna close the public hearing section of this agenda item at seven twenty PM. Hello, Ben?
Hey, Mayor, so nothing has changed since you've last seen this at the first reading. If you have any questions about anything within the ordinance, I'm happy to discuss it. For, just for a quick summary of it, we're removing the pole signs, we're adding different types of signage, such as monolith signs, monument signs, multi-tenant monument signs. And then we're gonna regulate how electronic message signs work, so that way they don't flash or change their screen too often to distract drivers. But as far as that, it's a, it's a fairly comprehensive change that you can see in red outline, but with any questions, nothing changed from the first reading.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding this?
I'll move that, we, approval line item sixteen is read.
Have a motion on the floor to approve item sixteen, as, agenda item sixteen is read, is there any, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and second on the floor, is there any discussion? Being none, we'll vote, all in favor said motion, signify by raise your right hand, motion passes. Agenda, agenda item seventeen, conduct, conduct a public hearing to receive public comments regarding the twenty twenty-four annual drinking water quality report, and consider taking any necessary action on approving the twenty twenty-four water quality consumer confidence report. I'll open this public hearing at seven twenty-two PM. Do we have anyone present that wanted to make comments, ask questions in regards to this public hearing phase of agenda item seventeen?
Does the public know where to find this report?
Didn't we get it mailed to us?
It was mailed to you.
We got it in the mail.
Should be mailed.
Just mailed out to everybody?
Has a label on it, yeah.
Is that correct, correct?
Yes, I know, I received mine.
Anyone present who wants to speak, ask questions, or make comments in regard to this public hearing on agenda item seventeen? Being no one, I will close the public hearing also at seven twenty-two PM. And Gerald?
Yes, sir.
How are you, Gerald?
I'm doing pretty good.
How are you doing?
Doing well, thank you.
Standard consumer confidence report this year. The, we have one violation, it was related to a sample that was late getting taken, and that was resolved really quickly. But we're able to report the violation in our CCR rather than have it mailed out to the entire city, which is a cost savings to us, and that's why it's in here rather than sitting there out. And, as I'd like to, like to remind you, most times, all of these boil water notices and these type of violations, that doesn't mean there was anything in the water, no E. coli, no, it's precautionary that TCQ makes cities do, just as a standard precaution after there is a violation like this. The, we did have one comment earlier, Mr. Whitstein talked about PFAs. That is covered in here for the first, maybe second time, we may have talked about it last year, but polyfluoracetates, forever chemicals, are now being monitored by the EPA. They're not being controlled, or there's no standards, but they, what they have, they've set out minimum detectable limits by canvassing some of the top labs in the country, and they've set minimum standards for dete, minimum detection standards. And then that, every PWS in the state of Texas is being tested to those standards. And then some of the PFAs have concern levels, not, they're not violations of anything, they may be in the future. But we have no PFAs, and I think we did talk about this earlier in the year, but not at the C, the CCR last year. We do have one chemical that is tested for, that's, that's new, it's the lithium that's in our water. And the minimum detection, detection limit is nine billion parts, part per, parts per billion, and ours was at twelve. But there is no standard that they have set of where there's a point of concern. We're a thousand times below any level that would be a concern. So, and the PFAs are more likely, not more likely, are likely to be in the bottled water that you drink than in the water we produce.
Generated from the plastic of the bottle?
Well, those bottles are not the polyfluor, that's more like Teflon and things like that. There can be microplastics in there, but macroplastics in PFAs, which are forever, never go away. The bottled plastics, you know, can be passed and they'll deteriorate over time. But yeah, the PFAs come from groundwater primarily, I mean, surface water primarily. So the big cities and places that have lakes and rivers that they take the water out of, they process it to put it in the bottle, but they don't treat it for any type of PFA.
Just for clarification for our citizens, City of Rockdale does not use surface water for any water supply, it's all groundwater.
That's correct.
Yes. Counsel, any questions for Gerald regarding this item?
Not so much just for Gerald, but on page two, just the, the statement, contaminants may be found in drinking water that may cause taste, color, or odor, or odor problems. These types of problems are not necessarily causes for health concerns. Of course, we all know on social media that we frequently will see the sink full of orange water, and I wouldn't be able to be convinced that I should drink that. And how do we as a city just better control the message and address that? Because you see it frequently enough that I can understand a lack of confidence that a citizen might have.
Could I answer that with a question first, Councilmember Melton? I would ask Gerald, how does, what creates that condition? What leads to creating that condition where the water changes to a yellowish or brownish? I understand a drop in pressure is one of the contributing factors.
Well, the drop in pressure doesn't generate the, the cause. The cause is a buildup of, well, the city for many, many decades did not treat the water for corrosivity, which we have, out of the ground is a very acidic water, it's like a six point eight, six point seven, TCQ, I'm sorry?
PH level.
PH level. TCQ requires it be seven point oh or greater, but to get our water to a non-corrosive state, it has to be between seven point six and seven point nine. And so, but the reason it wasn't, I don't know why it wasn't treated for the corrosivity for all these years, but it ruined the pipes on the inside, and so.
The pipe has a buildup on it.
Turbication, and that, plus our water also has iron in it, and whenever it touches the oxygen, it becomes iron oxide. Now, we get that out pretty good with our aeration. We're putting in a new aerator sometime late this year on our Texas Street, and we have a good aeration removal at Mill Street. But what, what happens is that this will move to a stagnant location at the stem of a fire hydrant or in a dead end that doesn't get flushed enough, and then when there, there's a line break or a fire, that dead water becomes moving in the system, and it becomes, it comes out at people's homes.
The way, the way you combat that is through aggressive flushing and to try to clear, to clear that out.
And we flushed this morning.
That leads me to another question, I used to see quite often, at least I think monthly, fire hydrants being flushed late at night in the early morning hours? Maybe I'm just go, I'm older and I go to bed earlier now?
No, I, I, I changed it, we were spending a lot of money on overtime for guys to open hydrants and stand there and watch them, and so I moved it to daytime, we did it this morning, we do it on regular.
Okay.
Hours, and because they can go open a hydrant here, and we usually flush them ten to fifteen minutes or longer if necessary, and they'll go open another one and then come back and close that one down. But seemed to be an awful waste of time for me, to me to pay time and a half for them just to open those hydrants and.
But isn't the new lines that were replaced, and that's gonna help the coloration?
Absolutely, uh, yeah, we've got another fifty thousand, fifty, sixty thousand liter feet that's fixing to start being put in, but there's still a lot of old ones out there.
When you flush them, are you flushing them through the three-inch steamer or the five-inch?
Usually the three-inch.
Okay.
Do we have neighborhoods that are far more susceptible to having these orange sinks of water?
The neighborhoods that were built prior to the eighties, and late, even into the nineties, PVC became the primary water pipe for this area, this part of the country back in, in the, at late eighties and nineties.
Prior to that, was it clay?
I'm sorry?
Clay?
No, cast iron.
Cast iron?
Cast iron was the primary for a hundred years.
Yes, I agree with Councilman Melton, and I also believe this council and the prior council has done a lot of work for the water system and changing all the pipes. However, I do feel like we are lacking in education, like Councilman Melton is sharing. So can we, just how we sent out the quality report, can we send out a mailer just on education, sharing basically what you just said, but to every citizen?
Well, we did the, all the council people and myself and some others got and talked about, like Joyce, were you one of them that didn't name it? Yeah, that talked and, you know, had it on our website, that we explained what we were doing and what the cause of all of this was. But we can do whatever you want us to do.
I think it would be great, you know, it's hard to combat everything that's on social media, of course, but if we try to just continue to educate, and sometimes if you tell somebody something one time, it doesn't stick, but maybe every quarter, just some education that goes out.
Certainly wouldn't, wouldn't hurt, uh, go ahead.
Just like with the, with the new community engagement coordinator, there's gonna be more, more communication that goes out on a regular basis.
Sunday afternoon, I was at, at the golf course, and one of the guys came up to me and says, you know, why is the water still brown? And I said, but the, usually the conversation turns from there, what are y'all doing with all the money? And that's kind of the way it went there. We pay the highest, highest taxes, you know, in this area, and so there, it, there's all kinds of things that are mixed together, but I'd be glad to do whatever you need, if you want to have a.
I think it would be worth the peace of mind of our citizens, just to show that we're doing the best we can.
Yes, Mel.
I'm curious if it could be in the budget, and maybe this is just not a good idea, and I, and I'm happy to listen to that. Should the city have a stock of bottled water? Because I feel like there's multiple times a year where we learn of a neighborhood that is high senior citizen, and then perhaps high health issues, where it would be nice, in some of these situations, to be able to deliver a case of water? Or is that just too superfluous?
I don't think that's too superfluous, but I, I think we would, if that situation came up to where it was dire for those residents, we would reach out to TDM, text Department of Emergency Management to support us on that, on that need.
Could the City of Marlin do the same thing?
I have no affiliation with the City of Marlin, I know what's going on over there.
All the time.
I know what's going on over there with their water system, but I don't know.
I don't think you want to know.
Yeah.
I promise you, you don't want to know.
I agree with Councilman Melton, I know, I believe y'all, we are in a text message group, and I, I believe you were able to secure some for Hunter's Chase, but I do feel like we need to have that more readily available.
I'm sorry, say again.
Go ahead.
It does have bottled water, has a pretty short shelf life when it's sitting in a hot environment somewhere. The better, in my opinion, would be have some kind of agreement with Walmart or with Tractor Supply or whoever, that when we need it, we're coming to get it.
That's what, that's what we do now.
How we're paying for it and this, I just go ahead and have the agreement established, so that when Public Works is sent there, they can get it and go.
We, we do.
We did that earlier this year, when there was a, there was boil notice for.
Hunter's Chase.
Hunter's Chase.
Because there, there is businesses that have pallets of bottled water in their warehouse.
I guess you'll be seeing this on another budget line in a few weeks.
I mean, water, we need water, it's the basis of Maslow's law, we need water.
Sure, good, good comments, good thoughts, good questions.
Thank you, Gerald.
Thank you, Gerald.
Appreciate you.
Counsel, entertain action on agenda item seventeen to approve the water quality report?
I'll make a motion that we approve or accept the twenty twenty-four annual drinking water quality report as provided.
Motion, have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion? Being no discussion, we'll vote, all in favor said motion, signify by raise your right hand, motion passes. Agenda item eighteen, consider take any necessary action on a recommendation to the city council regarding a preliminary plat submitted by Juan Perez Jr. for a property located at sixteen thirty-five North FM nine oh eight into two slots. Tim, Ben?
All right, so this one is a unique plat, the reason it is, is this one actually can be denied, and I'll get into the reasons behind that. So before I get into the details, just so the council knows, with plotting, it's usually a ministerial process, which means if it meets your city codes, it has to be approved. This one does not meet codes, and I'll get into those now. So, some minor alterations, is they have a previous mayor listed on the signature block, we've asked him to correct that, and then they also have listed that we're in the year of twenty twenty-three, but we're in the year of twenty twenty-five. Now, on the items of the reason why this plat could be disproved, is they need to give us a bill of statement, either stating that they're gonna get water from Southwest Mylum, or they're gonna have a well on their property, because this property is within our ETJ, so they will not get city utilities out there. And with that decision, it is gonna affect the northern lot. So currently, the northern lot is smaller than a half acre. And if they're gonna do Southwest Mylum water, that lot would have to be a minimum of a half acre. If they do a well, then it has to be a minimum of an acre. And so with that decision that's made, I talked to the applicant, it seems like he's gonna do a well, and so I've let him know that that does need to be an acre out there. And then the final note is they're gonna have septic out there, so they'll have to display where the drain field is gonna be. And contingent on that, the drain field is required to be five feet away from the property line minimum. And so since the way the plat is drawn out, that northern lot is too small, so you could either disprove the plat and make them resubmit a completely new plat, or you can approve the plat contingent on that they have that northern lot be a half, uh, uh, an acre, excuse me.
Do they have the real estate to make it an acre?
They do.
How big is the whole piece?
So the whole piece, oh, I'd have to look, this is real small.
It's this, these.
It looks like the first lot is point four, and then lot two is six acres, and so they. And so they would just take a little bit out of lot two.
Where is?
It's that tip down there, right? Just that one, the angle?
Yeah, the northern lot here.
Little bit each.
Oh, the very north.
That is that is the lot that is too small. This lot is perfectly fine as is. Essentially, what's going to happen is this property line is going to have to move down to at least make it an acre to make that work with the other staff comments.
So legally, based on the guidelines of Post Oak Savannah, and as you stated, they do have to have minimum of an acre of an acre to put a water well on. If they wanted to put a wa- they couldn't put a water well on that small one as it sits right now legally. And Post Oak Savannah is not going to approve that for them to do it. Honestly, I think if we didn't change this, we'd be setting them up for potential failure.
They're just going to have problems down the road if we don't.
So the recommendation is either to deny it and have them re resubmit it with a new with a new plat or to approve it with the requirement that they provide a letter, a bill of statement from Southwest Mylum that they will have water.
I think personally, I think I'd like to see a new plat, but that's just me.
And so.
Is that six acres? That's that's the whole, this this little nut right here.
Yeah, that's right.
That's the that's the whole thing?
That is.
That's lot two.
That's lot two. Lot one is point four. And so if I'll give the two differences of how you motion this tonight. If you disprove it, you'll see this plat again. If you approve it, then the planning commission is just going to see the updated plat when they come in for a final. So it's really a determination of council wants to see their second plat when it comes back around. Because this is a preliminary with these corrections that need to be made. If you made the motion of approval on those conditions and those conditions were met, then there's not necessarily a reason that you'd have to see it again.
They could approve it.
You're saying.
With the with the movement of that line to create a one acre tract.
Right, yeah, they.
And then it wouldn't have to come back to council.
You could set those standards and they would have to meet those standards. If they did not and they proposed something differently, which would not work, it'd come back to you.
Gotcha.
And it's all four of these bullet points?
Yeah, all staff's comments within the recommendations of the four bullet points with the two major ones of the drain field and then the well, making that northern lot bigger.
It has to be an acre because I don't think that's.
Does a drain field not have to have more than an acre? So the drain field is determined by your soil type out there. So how do you even know if you have enough real estate for a drain field?
It would go to the county for approval. And so I've already let them know. They're actually the ones that sent me those requirements of if they have a well or Southwest Mylum. And so they would make that determination as well on if their proposed drain field would work.
We approve it, they meet our four bullet points, still doesn't necessarily get them a septic system.
That's right, yeah, the county could make changes to that.
The burden is on them at that point.
Yeah.
I don't want to say it again, I'll do it.
Action, council?
I'll make a make a motion that we accept, uh, the replat for Juan Perez Jr. property located at sixteen thirty five North FM nine oh eight into two lots. Uh, with the contingent on meeting the four bullet points that were recommended by planning and zoning as provided to us.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floors. Any discussion?
Just to clarify, it doesn't say in these four bullets that it has to be a minimum of an acre.
It's in the regulations.
Okay.
For the well part.
Okay, okay.
Depending on the letter of statement that they'll give us, then they have to meet the requirements.
Okay.
Motion on second on the floors, any further discussion? And then we'll vote all in favor said motion signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. We've already handled agenda item nineteen, moving down to agenda item twenty. Consider take any necessary action to appoint Barbara Bullware Wells. The Knight Law Firm is interim city attorney and ratify the letter of engagement previously submitted. Tim?
Uh, so Michelle Lemke was appointed to the city attorney back in two thousand nine by the city council um, and has worked and basically, um, Barbara has been her assistant city attorney, providing us with general counsel while Michelle acted as prosecutor. She is retiring or she she resigned effective June second. So I went ahead and asked Barbara to submit a letter of intent, a letter of engagement as interim city manager and sign that even though that is something that council, it's your responsibility. So I need I need an attorney.
Just an attorney.
You mistakenly said city manager.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Anybody other volunteer? No, um, so I'm asking for council to to ratify that agreement.
So how long will, uh, is this an interim thing? Uh, is this a long term thing? How do cost structures align so that we're not losing money? Um, because we're paying a higher rate. I don't know if we're paying a higher rate.
I don't know what Michelle was paying as prosecutor or was charging as prosecutor. Um, but I think that your rates have stayed the same what you was charging as previously. Um, and as far as that's concerned, this is up to council, you know, whether they, you know, long term want to go ahead and and appoint her as city attorney or have me go out for RFQ and interview folks, uh, for that position.
Is it good practice in interim, it's fine? Is it good practice to have one and the same? Or should you have one that kind of over like working and kind of overseeing administrator?
And according to our charter, you you appoint a city attorney and they that's their response. Their their the whole thing is their responsibility and they can appoint a assistant. Um, in the cities that I've been in, I've had it both ways. Um, where I've had one attorney that acted as both attorney and prosecutor. Um, and in most cases, it's it is, um, it has been, um, where you have a separate attorney in the roles because the roles are are different. Prosecutor role is significantly different than general counsel.
So I think that's the wrong way, Barbara. I don't want to pay Barbara to drive from Austin to come prosecute a speeding ticket that we're going to get a hundred dollars on and we're going to pay her two hundred to come do it. That's how do we how do we combat that? That doesn't make that math doesn't math.
Um, I don't have an answer for you tonight.
Go ahead. Well, I I know we're in the position we're in.
This is, yeah.
We need to do this.
Is this an interim or not? That's what I mean.
Okay, so this is an this the contract is for an interim appointment.
And if it if you look at it and the numbers make sense, then I'm okay with it. I just want to make sure.
So I I'll have to look and see.
On average, how many times does the prosecutor have a trial to attend in municipal court per month?
Um, probably two or three times a month we have we have court.
That requires the time of the prosecutor?
A couple of times anyways.
Couple of times a month?
They they will have and and then and then they also have.
And.
Discussions, but I think that's handled.
Right, and when.
Line.
When said prosecutor comes to the court, is it just for one case? Or we or do we set it up where her time is better well served? His or her time, whoever's appointed, is better well served to have like multiple cases to prevent what council member Perry just referenced from happening?
So whenever we have whenever we hold court, there is a docket and it and it has multiple, sometimes as many twenty or thirty cases on the docket, but it sometimes really depends on who shows up for 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 that tomorrow. We have a jury, we have jury trials and we just have two jury trials?
Wednesday, we have.
Wednesday.
Two jury trials and pre-trials.
Yeah, so Wednesday, so she she wouldn't come for just one. And and with jury trials are uncommon. We do only do those a couple, you know, a couple of times a year. Generally, um, the normal dockets, um, there's going to be multiple cases on those.
So you try to build the docket so that it's inclusive of Barbara's time when she's here.
Yes.
She can do multiple.
And that's including up the P and Z cases as well?
Yes, the code, the code.
The code enforcement, yes.
Local and local citations.
Mm hmm.
And not just traffic tickets.
Okay.
Any other questions? Counsel? Entertain action on agenda item twenty?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept the appointment of Barbara, I almost say BBW. Um, as the interim city attorney, uh, while Mr. Kelty, uh, massages the numbers to see what makes sense to move forward with.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion on the floors, any discussion? Be none, we'll vote all in favor said motion signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes.
Barbara, thank you for doing that.
Agenda item twenty one, discuss and adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget calendar. Tim?
So the budget calendar that's in your in your packet does include a number of meetings with council. Um, there's actually three meetings proposed in or two, excuse me, two meetings in Ju- July and three in August for council to get together and and work through the budget. This calendar does reflect a de minimis rate, um, which is kind of which is the worst case scenario for an agenda is most aggressive. Um, and talking to, um, the appraisal, uh, the lead appraisal for Mylum County, I met with him last week and we reviewed the processes. I may be recommending a rate that is actually below the voter approval rate and doesn't get into the de minimis rate, but it's really close. So I would recommend that we go ahead and follow the de minimis schedule.
Counsel?
Is a quorum required for budget workshops?
Um, so a budget workshop with council is does not require a quorum, um, but it does require a quorum to be effective. In other words, you don't you we don't we can adopt a a budget without any budget workshops. It's not it's not a required requirement for adopting the budget. But for me to present a budget that reflects what you all understand and and know and want, that's where the the budget workshops come into play. Um, so.
Just so y'all know, I will will be gone, won't make July seventh, fourteenth, nineteenth, twenty first.
I'm sorry?
But they don't need me.
You're going to be gone when?
All of July.
Is there going to be times that you're here in July at all?
Hope not.
Well, maybe I can Skype with you and and go over things and get.
Yeah, I'm available. Not here.
Um, but the other the August meetings are are required are required meetings to meet the state calendar or the calendar requirements of the state. We do have a little bit of of, um, cushion in here in case things go wrong. If we have a meeting that requires a quorum and they don't show up, um, as long as it's not a public hearing that requires us to advertise in advance. I don't know, can you have a public hearing? You take public input anyways.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Entertain action on agenda item twenty one?
Okay, I move that we accept staff's recommendation and approve the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget calendar.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the floors, any discussion? Be no discussion, vote all in favor said motion signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes agenda item twenty two. This is a long one, I'm not going to read it to you. I think you can see the agenda item. Uh, I'll just read the very first part. Consider take any necessary action approving the first reading of an ordinance amending chapter three, building regulations, article three point one, streets, sidewalks, and right of ways.
So what this does, Mayor, um, so we were looking at the at next link is coming in as a as a utility in the city. Um, and, you know, every other utility that we have actually pays the city a franchise tax for use of our streets and rights of way. Um, and so we were pressing next link to enter into one. They've argued and Barbara researched this. There's actually an exception for, I don't know, I'm not sure why, but there's an exception for them um, because of the fact that the the rates that would normally be paid under a franchise agreement were approved by the PUC. Um, so and it's an annual annual approval of rates from the Public Utilities Commission of Texas. Um, and those rates are are listed there in the memo and in in the ordinance. So they will pay for the for that right, but they don't do that through a a franchise agreement. Instead, in order to take advantage of those rates, um, this ordinance that Barbara has put together is required for adoption.
So this ordinance will replace those rates for the franchise fee?
This this ordinance basically allows us to to require next link to pay the rates that that PUC approved.
Or any other right of way entity that comes through.
To the city or to the Public Utilities Commission?
They pay it to the city.
Okay.
And it this is this just affects a certain type of utility?
So, um, a few years ago, probably about eight years ago, um, the legislature set up a a methodology because they were getting a lot of complaints from the from the telecommunications industry about wildly different franchise agreements that they were having all over the state. So they assigned it under the PUC and PUC now sets the rates. And so whatever franchise agreements were in place, they were honoring those, but then they fade away. You didn't have any franchise agreements with ne- next link. So you have to go under what PUC has established. Um, PUC, um, in chapter one eighty three of the local government code is a it is a certain type of entity that provides wired telecommunication. There's wired and wireless. And, um, this next link is a wired telecommunication. And they the, um, rates that were set and they do take them up every year and set them and you then adopt them for this upcoming year. And that does become your what you get paid for the access lines. And so that's part of what's in this, um, ordinance is a definition of what is access lines, what's your right of way. It's allowing them to come in to your right of way and then for them to pay you for those the number of access lines that they lay there.
Got it.
Just out of curiosity, we don't have to let anybody in the into our right of way if we don't choose to, correct? And the reason I ask this, the more people we let into our right of way, we're getting a franchise or a Public Utility Commission adjusted rate or however that is. But it's also that many more things that we have to deal with when we need in our right of way for water or sewer.
Certainly, those are issues that you have to balance. And I will say that many of these entities, I mean, it it started, you know, I mean, whether it's spectrum or I mean, whatever in, you know, type of, uh, cable provider, telecommunications provider wired, um, is coming in through your rights of way. That will cause you additional issues when you have to widen because you will have to move things, you will have to adjust things. Um, and so, yes, it's a, I mean, and that's partly now, I mean, you haven't necessarily had a lot of widening of like the residential areas and you won't. But certainly you're, you know, I mean, seventy nine and, you know, some of your bigger streets, you will ultimately probably have that. But that's right now, this is all part of the push of the federal government as well to provide nationwide broadband. That is that is one of the things that it is part of and part of what next link is being paid on the back end, um, through some of the federal dollars that are coming through to push it so that we have nationwide broadband, wired, wireless type, um, internet.
Was there a schedule that shows what which ones fall in the franchise and what what?
You will not have a franchise anymore. They've ruled those out.
Okay.
I mean, it's just.
Even for, um, electricity or gas?
I'm talking for telecommunications only.
Like optimum, right now, we receive, is the only tele- AT and T in there? Like optimum, right now, we receive, is the only tele, AT&T in there? Um, so right now, we get a franchise payment from Optimum, so when that franchise agreement expires, then they would pay based on this?
They're trying to get everybody away from franchise agreements, and you're going to whatever the rate is that is established by PUC.
Have you looked at, if, if Optimum's expired today, their franchise versus PUC, how they balance or don't balance?
I, I have, and frankly, the, I mean, the, the franchise payment that we receive is based on the number of customers that they have. Um, so as they compete for customers, it's gonna, it's gonna.
PUC, based on that, or is it off linear footage of how many feet they put through our right-of-way?
It is based on the number of access lines that they put through your right-of-way.
By access lines, are you talking about residential, like, connections?
I'm talking about the, the line that is in your right-of-way.
Infrastructure that they put in?
Yes.
But if they put a, if they put a line from me to Daniel, and there's only one customer down here, is that different than if it's me to Daniel, and there's fifteen customers down here? Does that make sense?
It is.
It's not customer-based.
It's not customer-based.
Not through the PUC program. So once they come through, they're paying whatever that is. Okay.
I have a remedial question. As a gardener and a digger, when people move into homes and stuff, you have your utilities marked so that you know where not to dig, so will this become a part of what is marked? Because I don't know.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I think that was one of the problems that the city suffered initially when Nextlink was coming through, because nobody really knew. Huh?
Like today ladies.
Oh, well, yes, oh, okay. I'm not thinking that it was actually ended. It was, it was started when Nextlink came through, and is, well, going to continue at least until Nextlink is done. But they're trying to find, um, areas in the right-of-way that they can put these lines, these access lines. But, you know, it, it, hey, look at it this way. You got great records now.
Good points. We know, we know which ones look good, for sure. Okay, counsel. Uh, any other questions or comments in regards to Agenda Item Twenty-two? I'll entertain.
First reading.
Entertain action on the first reading. Is that right? It will come back for a second reading, yes.
This, and I, and I would tell you, so this is, the, the deadline to adopt this is July second, to be able to take advantage of this. Um, so we do have a special meeting planned after adjournment to have the second reading on this ordinance.
That's our second reading. So, counsel, uh, first reading, action?
I make a motion that we accept, uh, as read.
A motion on the floors, there a second? A motion and a second on the floor to approve Agenda Item Twenty-two, excuse me, is read. Is there any discussion? Be no discussion, will vote, all in favor said motion signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes. Uh, at this time, I have eight oh two PM. We are going to adjourn from regular session and convene into executive session. Uh, discussion pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one zero seven two of the Texas Government Code two, one, deliberate about real property negotiations regarding the Rockdale Airport. Two, deliberate about real property negotiations with the Rockdale Fair Association. Three, deliberate about purchase, exchange, exchange lease or value of real property for the purpose of commercial development of the city's six acres located eleven sixty-six, West Highway seventy-nine in Rockdale, Texas. Eight oh two PM, we are now convening into executive session. Okay. At nine PM, we are reconvening into open session. Are there any motions or any action to come out of, uh, executive session?
No action to be taken out of executive session, sir.
No action to be taken out of executive session. Uh, I will now, unless there's any other topics that council has to discuss, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Counsel, any other topics to discuss? Being none, we are adjourned at nine oh one PM.